Now, now, now. Please, 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 please.
Make sure those turn on.
Turn on view.
And.
Okay.
What's that?
We officially begun meeting?
No, we're not officially done. We haven't officially started yet. It's still being recorded. It will be, it's recording. They start a little while before we are ready to start.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty toasty. It's a meaty.
Yeah.
It has some meat in it.
Yeah, it was hot.
Yeah.
After a lot of peppers in there.
That's our sound. I tried to talk after I did and I couldn't even, I couldn't even talk.
Well. Did they have the little black they also not?
No, I don't know.
Those things. Watch out. Yeah, cuz you could want to.
How are you?
Yeah, it's a chicken.
What do you hear from your folks?
Uh, yeah, they're, they're settling nice over in England. They're having a boot and a half out there.
Now, good for them. That'd be great. Is that where they're from?
No, they, they're, they're, they did their first missions back there and so now they're ready to serve a senior mission.
Oh, in England?
Yep, and so they went back to a London mission.
It's where my husband serves.
Right, it's in Hyde Park.
Sweet.
It's in Hyde Park.
I, I could not tell you. I just know that.
Somewhere there.
There. Over it.
Somewhere in London, right?
Yeah, somewhere in London.
It's just a small city. They should know right where they're at.
Basically the size of Michigan, so.
Yeah. We wanna get started. We're on a time limit here. We have a lot of material. We don't know if we're gonna get through everything tonight. The purpose behind this meeting for those of you that are first timer, it's been a while. We have spent time as staff going through what we see as needed changes in the development code. And so we've done our best to come up with what our thoughts are and our ideas to make those changes. Now we wanna run it in front of you guys so you can get familiar with it. Give us your feedback or ideas if you think this wouldn't work. We need something better. That's the whole scope behind it. One of the things I wanna make very clear to you right now. This section right here in the center of town. That is the form-based code. We are not talking about any of that right now. That's a complete separate code. So everything we're talking about tonight will refer to everything outside of that downtown. Okay? We are in the process of working on that one also to make some changes. That's our next project after we get through these. Cuz it has some changes that need to happen, so. We wanted to keep that in mind, keep that in mind for you as we go through this meeting. Cuz when we hit some of those things and you're going, well, we got a problem in the downtown. Great, let's set that aside till we get that. Okay? So let's start with number one. We're just gonna move right through it. And these are broke down into different parts. Number one, we wanted to keep what we were talking about in one particular section with just that session, that part of it. Because when it comes in front of you for a vote, if you like this one but you don't like the next one, you can pass this one, you can turn the other one down. We don't lose the whole thing in, in that meeting. This gives you that opportunity to work on them on individual basis. So. Things for clarification. When you see red, we are either removing it, changing it, or moving it within the code. This is one of the disadvantages of our Unicode. We're only allowed two colors, green and red. So green means change in it. Green means adding to, red means removing. But sometimes what you'll see is removing it from one spot and moving it to another. So it doesn't always mean it's going away. Cuz our idea behind this is we want things consolidated and easier in one format. So that the citizens and, and anybody looking at this isn't chasing all over our code, finding the answer of the one problem. So when landscaping, landscaping comes up as a question, we want people to just go to the landscaping section to get those answers. So this one right.
So Alan, is, is that, is that what's driving these changes? This clarification, is that, or is there anything, anything else driving these particular changes?
There are particular things we need to change because they may be in violation of fair housing. They may be in violation of equity. Those types of things, discriminating, that type of things, or.
I noticed as I was going through, yeah, a lot of it is kind of simplification, making it less wordy and.
Yes. And that's the biggest thing is we're trying to get it down to language the everyday person can read and understand. We live in it all day long. So we get to that point where we just go, yeah, great, here, 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 and they're going, you lost me on the first here. So we're trying to do that and again, consolidating it into one area. So you have that flow of what's going on. Good question. And again, this is an open meeting. This isn't just me up here talking. This is an opportunity for you guys to weigh in, so questions are welcome.
We have a lot of weigh-ins here. I had a whole list.
Okay. So in this one, this one is more of a clarification and cleanup. You're looking right here. Um, we wanted to clarify the size. If you hit that five hundred square feet or, and taller than ten feet in accessory buildings, then you have to go to this six-foot setback. If you fall below that two hundred, people can set like a bully barn or whatever they want right on the property line. As long as it doesn't drain onto the neighbor's yard. So that's still a caveat. When people come in and ask me this stuff, I go, you can put it on the property line, watch where you're dripping, but remember, you're gonna have to maintain that shed and would like to do it without walking in your neighbor's yard. So, but that allows them to do that.
I have a quick, uh, sure, uh, thing. When you say ten feet or taller, do we have any language in this that explains where we measure the height from? Is it in the base of the building?
Top plate.
Top plate.
From the ground to the top plate.
And so if they got a fence, they can put it right against the fence.
Right against the fence, as long as it doesn't drain it onto the neighbor.
Yeah.
If they're under the two hundred square feet.
Right.
We didn't change that. That was still in the code. That's why it's still in black. So the green was the only thing we changed in. Keep scrolling. Yeah, stop me if you have questions. That's all that was in that one. So when number one's done, great, we only got five more. We'll be done at twenty after, right? Yes. Hey, this was another one of those that we needed some clarification. Uh, we really run into some challenges with bed and breakfast boarding houses. A lot of people don't use that language anymore. They just basically short-term limits is what most people look at. So that's why some of this has disappeared. We're also looking at some of those things that the commission has the ability to review that does not have to go to council. So we're just making some, some of them are so minor that it's not something that has to go that next level. But we're also removing some of those things and moving them into a position where it does have to go to council.
Which if you, the, the, the less times you have to go to a body, this makes it for citizens, right?
But if it's something that's significant, we want it to go before those that are actually responsible for any of this, which is the council. So you see this.
Now, I know there was some legislation that dealt with daycare centers and daycare. Is, does this incorporate that new, new legislation?
It does. Yeah. And, and we've gone in and we've reviewed state statutes on daycares and the requirements. They regulate that, also regulate group homes where they're allowed, what's required. And so we've adjusted some of that in here also. Kyle, let's keep going now. This one is just a definition. We wanted the definition of commercial daycare center. So this is the full-fledged in a commercial area, not something that's going in a neighborhood. So we wanted definitions to define what's in our code. And if you notice that the thirteen or more, this is where your state statute steps in and this is the limitations they have put on these type of things. So it's not some number we've come up with.
So as we get further down.
You'll see more.
The six and seven and all that, are those state statute numbers as well?
They are.
Okay, cuz that, I was talking, my wife used to do it. Wasn't a daycare, but it was a little preschool and she was like, where do they get these numbers?
Because. Yeah, it's, it's a state regulation. And as you see in here for a daycare facility, you see that seven to twelve.
Yes.
And then number thirteen triggers you into the commercial. And what triggered this was that daycare that we just passed a little while ago. They wanted to put thirty-five in a residential neighborhood, thirty-five kids. And we just went, well, wait a minute, this, and so that's where we come in and wrote this language, Brian.
So. My, my point question with this is that we have strict like six or less, seven to twelve, thirteen or more. Um. What, is it as soon as you hit seven that you have to apply for the new, uh?
Yes.
So and as soon as, there's no, there's no overlap?
Right.
Even if it's only like a temporary for a week or two, you can't.
Here's the challenge.
Uh-huh.
As a city, I'm not going in there checking in.
Yeah.
Brianna, there is food in here if you wanna grab someplace. Well, we're in, we're in the easy stuff, so.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you're, I would guess that if you get a daycare and you know you're gonna take your kid for a few weeks or a month, but then he's gonna be gone.
You know, you just, we kinda turn a blind eye to that. Okay.
We're running into a problem as you may have somebody that's going, you've got more kids in here than what it says. It's usually the neighbor going, I got too many kids in the neighborhood.
They're gonna get reported to the state.
They're gonna get reported to us and the state. And then they'll step in and inspect and we have Natalie actually go out of code enforcement.
Okay.
And say you'll be defeated. That's kinda typically what triggers something like that is if you get a complaint. Yeah, but as, as long as they're controlling things and there's no complaints, I think Brian fifteen and.
No, we didn't say anything.
You know, yeah.
So that's it. These are just definitions we're talking about here, Brianna. Uh, of, of the daycares and that facilities and where they're at. And then, uh, here's your family home daycare. This again follows the state statutes. And for your clarification, what we're talking about tonight does not include the twelve city blocks in the downtown form base. This is everything outside of that in our existing development code. So this only happens with that. We're going to go through and review form base after we finish this up.
I had, I had one question on. And I don't know if we've gotten there yet. I can't remember exactly where it was. I just made notes here, but I noticed on one of those like family home daycare or if it was the other daycare. It said we required two parking spaces per employee and I thought that seems a little.
I thought it was one per employee.
Excessive.
We'll look at it.
Yeah, let's look at it when we get there cuz I was like that, seems a little excessive.
That's probably, let's see. Where scene should be down here a little further.
Facilities, new spaces, yeah, well, two space, two plus, two spaces per.
It is two per employee on larger shift.
Yes, space, yeah, which, why would we need two, two spaces per employee?
One of the reasons we do that is that we don't require any parking for the kids. And so it doesn't allow for parents or anything that are coming to visit.
Yeah. But, but you could. Let's see, seven daycare facility. Yeah, I, I get that and that's kinda what I said. I said, well, you know, maybe you've got a parent that wants to pull in and go talk to the teacher or something, but, but couldn't they just have like maybe one or two guest spaces or something like that?
You can change that language to make it be one per employee at highest shift and then X number of per thousand square feet or something like that.
But if you look at that one on Fifth West, I think we got into a lot of problems with parking and it was just like a disaster.
Yes.
So, I mean, I, we're good with daycare and there's a lot of parents that come regularly.
So that's probably what we have with schools right now is.
Yeah.
That's all the parents come in and there's no.
Yeah, I, I think you need that.
Streets and you can't get the help.
Yeah.
There's no place to go in, so they park out front.
Yeah.
Lincoln Elementary, I think, is the one you're talking about the most.
Lincoln Middle School.
Lincoln was one my granddaughters went to and I can.
Well, that's specified in.
Can't get in.
It's two spaces, but not so much. I think, I think that's a good idea. I just, it just seemed to me like on a daycare that two per employees seem.
What's the state requirement for employees per number of children?
Uh, well, they just ruined it, so it's, it's totally just blown up.
As a.
Yeah.
I don't, I, we stay at that statute. How many they have, we just go, how many employees?
It, it used to be one per six and now they've done a weird code where it's like point nine four for a child. I can't even tell you how to work it out, but now it's more, it's like probably one per eight or something.
One teachers that aren't all the way there, is that what you're saying?
Bigger ratios, yeah.
On the telephone.
Yeah, so this is the code if this is one per eight. For every eight kids.
One per eight is teachers per students. It's not.
And, and don't quote me on that. It's like I said, it's complicated.
That's how many employees at the large ones are having. That's only two parking spots for eight kids, so. That could be a potential of eight different parents.
Right.
Coming in, dropping off, taken away, so I, I don't know.
And that's only for younger. It's, the ratios are higher as they get older.
And one of the advantages, well, one of the things we push, especially on Fifth West, is an area for them to pull off the street, drop students off and pull out. So we're trying to make that a, a requirement in there so they don't have that issue going on. So we will mark it down and we'll review that, the two employees, whether to do two spaces per employee. We need one per employees at highest shift. And then we'll do so many either by the square foot each other or by number of students.
I'd be very careful on that because that's where we have most problems with parking.
Yes.
And then we end up using city streets, just like Pizza Hut over here, some other ones that end up, we give nothing for anybody to come to the facility, so. I just, I see where it may have come from, but two per, we have nothing for the parents. To me, that's probably still getting a little short. I mean, on the big times, so you're gonna park halfway down the street.
Yeah, but. Is that a real problem if they park halfway down the street to go to visit?
That's probably have right now.
And.
Where, I mean, when hip, for hip is moved out, that's how that happens.
I guess I'm just worried about making it too onerous on parking requirements so that it makes it too hard for them to.
It's big, it's a big deal when they have their toddler and their newborn in tow and, um, you know, they're having to haul them a city block. It actually is a big deal and then they leave them in the car and you've got all these problems. You gotta have parking.
But you know, let's, let's look at this. If you do the one to six and we're doing a one per eight students, you're gonna have your highest shift in one. I mean, that's gonna handle that. If you've got the thirteen, you're gonna have one plus two cuz we're gonna make them round up, not round down in that situation. So then they would have number of employees plus two parking spaces. And if you've got six kids, you know, it's, it's not that huge. Or we really run into the challenges when we get into that twenty and thirty. Then I hit a commercial and.
Yeah, those, those bigger ones, I agree.
Then the other, we just kinda bunch some of those that kindergarten and elementary. Those that were, kids can't drive was different. We're focusing on teachers, but by the time they get to the high school, then I'm dealing with high school kids actually driving in there too, so your parking ratios go up. We have changed and we've left those the same. We just clarified where they're at in those. And we also included the high school and colleges, things like Evans Hair Styling, uh, Paul Mitchell. So they're in this same deal as the high schools. It's different than the university. That's the one below. University, we have a whole different caveat.
Sometimes we miss or forget the elementaries. I mean, and they bring their pairs in and their student teachers in and, I mean, we packed in the whole parking lots completely full without even counting any parents.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if we wanna govern all that, but it's definitely, our elementaries are definitely concerned about every one of them right now because you can't get in or out.
Yeah. It does make it a challenge. We did some numbers. Katie did a count on parking spaces on the university. I don't know how long that took her. That had to be far. Would you say over seventy-five hundred parking spaces on campus?
I'm not even sure. It was lots.
And we ran the ratios and then we realized there's fifty-eight, or there's eighty-five hundred employees at the university. But how many of those are online teachers that aren't in there? How many are on shift? So it was one of those. We didn't really think we wanted to change what was going on. Basically with this ratio, we had room for almost eight thousand student, eight thousand parking spaces. We could handle up to twenty-four thousand students and about four or five thousand employees. But we didn't wanna change that right now. That may change in the future. I don't know. We're just gonna have to see how that goes. But this is strictly university, not housing.
Do we have any numbers? How many BYU Idaho students bring their cars?
Fifty-seven percent?
I thought it was eighty.
Yeah, they announced at the housing summit it was close to eighty.
Yeah.
It used to be about sixty-seven and they've gone out.
Yeah.
So eighty percent bring their cars, but we're accounting for twenty percent? So eighty percent bring their cars, but we're accounting for twenty percent? I guess they don't always. They might walk from there.
As Brianna says, you've got different class schedules, so.
I will, I will just let you know, we have met with them on additional parking. So they are looking at additional parking on campus.
Thanks, Kyle.
We have to be permitted to park on campus anyway, don't they?
This is just our permitted use of, we're, we're putting it in to show you where we want C U Ps for the daycares. But we also have those, uh, titles for them. In the commercial daycare, we only want it in the commercial areas, which is mixed use, CBC, RBC, those types of things. And they do require a conditional use permit from city council, planning and zoning, and the reason behind that is. It doesn't always fit in a zone. You may go, this is not a good place for kids. And so we leave that up to you guys to make that determination. And then, uh, for somebody to put the family home daycare, six or less in their home. That's one, I think we just go to the P and Z with that one, don't we? Figures that go all the way to. City Council.
Will, with these changes, as of right now, they don't, but with these changes, it will.
That's a question. Do we need to come to you, City Council, or somebody putting a daycare in?
Have a safety inspection.
It's still gonna come to the P and Z, it's just not gonna be along to City Council.
They have to have a safety inspection, right?
They all have to have safety.
Any problems with, it's that way right now, right?
Yeah, I mean, my, my wife did it. It wasn't a daycare. Like I said, it was a preschool for ten years in our neighborhood and they had like eighteen kids and.
How do these apply to a HOA community with? I mean, does the city take presidents or precedents or?
Can trump this one. They can say no daycares allowed. There are certain things that the HOA can't. The short-term rentals that just came out, HOAs cannot restrict a short-term rent. Only thing we can do as a city is, do you meet life safety? Do you meet parking requirements? Those types of things. But as far as I know, we can't. They can't restrict it. Uh, yes. Prior to, they could. If it was in there before July first twenty-four. Yes, but if it was, and I've had some go, well, we got this division, this division and this division. This one has it in theirs, but these don't. We just combined them and go into the first one. I said, no. And so this just called them out. So I'm, I'm hearing in you, that's a six or less, you just wanna go with you in that. Or do you want to just say administrator? And let staff do it.
I would think for a family home one, as long as they've got a safety inspection to make sure it's all safe for the kids. I don't know why we need to be all that involved in.
Yeah, as long as they have some parking and.
They'd have to still submit an application, but we would, we would, we would review it as staff. Rather than then bringing it on to you guys. So let's make a note of that, Kyle. Six, six or less. Now the question is seven to twelve. Because six or less is just administrative, administrated.
I think seven to twelve should come to the council.
Council, okay. That's how we have it set up right now. Just coming to council, P and Z and then council.
I think that makes sense cuz that's where you're gonna start seeing a lot more traffic. You're gonna see a lot more disruption to a neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, you're probably getting into that. But I don't know, Sheila Como did, probably had twelve kids for thirty years and.
Do they have to be like, okay, and so they have to follow. So then. And then they have to follow the ratio. So see, they're gonna have to have at least one employee.
State's going to be checking in on that regularly, make sure they're following state regulations for life safety, features, all of that.
Yeah, so that's a lot more involved, though, I think, yeah.
Move on, Kyle. And we're just calling out here, daycare facility, seven to twelve. Commercial daycare, we're putting those as permitted because those are in a commercial zone and they're going to fit within that. We have to show you the whole permitted use.
And we bypassed the, uh. The home occupation things yet, or are we still coming to that?
I think we're still coming to that. This is just showing it in the other zone deal, so we can keep going through this. You're talking home occupation or home business. We have not got to that. Okay, this is the one you're talking about. We added some of these in as permitted uses as an examples, because we know they're going on in homes. It's not an all-inclusive list, but this is one that seems to happen a little bit more often. Beauty salons, piano, music training, they weren't listed in here. We wanted just to have those clarifications. Cuz what happens is if they come in there and telling what they're doing, I have to be able to relate it to some if it's not on this list. And we're trying to get enough of a deal in here. You've got artists, you've got music, uh, home cooking, home crafts.
Yeah, I like where you added other uses. Go, go on down a little.
Uh, probably. Yeah, that's gonna be a commercial.
Yeah, and that'd be worse than a daycare because they're coming and staying.
So is that language in here further on with the?
Hairdressers?
Beauty salon.
Beauty salon is under your regular permitted uses. And that it's not allowed in. Randall, how are you doing? We have food if you wanna grab a plate.
So wait, so these are permitted without a C U P, is that what you're saying here?
These are just permitted use examples. And then some of them will still fall. These are, if you were to come in and say, I wanna open a salon in my house. Okay, that's allowed and under a home occupation, you can do that. If you ask me for childcare, seven to twelve, I'm gonna go, great, it's an allowed use, but you're gonna have to have a conditional youth permit. Go farther. This is for people to look at and say, does mine fit within a permitted use?
Yeah, go down a little bit further. I think there's something that talks about the times that they can. Let's see what's that one.
This one's here, uh, for instruction. Can't have any more than six in a boiling unit. And the home must be owner at least the occupant.
Yeah, I think that's good because.
That's what happened with gullies out here is they weren't gonna live on site. They weren't gonna be there, which is strictly daycare. He says, you're in a residential neighborhood. This should be a home, that you're doing this in the daytime and then go home. If not, go find a commercial. So that's why we have added that in.
Building to. Run a business in that residence.
This is in the home business. The other was home occupation, so it does the same thing. If you're in a neighborhood, you've got.
I think what I'm doing, that's a little further down.
So the home business requirement, that requires the conditional use permit.
Some of them do, yes, yeah. I think we did one here a while back out in, uh, Willow's. Where the guy was putting a workshop in the neighborhood and it was a C U P, where it was a city council. Because it was something that could cause a disturbance in the neighborhood, so we did that.
And there were a few things.
He put, there were conditions put on it.
You know what? The one I'm looking for, I think, actually isn't a change. It was just, I noticed as I was reading through. Yeah, read, no, we had some restrictions on, on home occupations, like. I'm, times that they could do them and I, I mean, I can get that if it's a. A daycare or whatever, but they're not gonna be after nine o'clock at night anyway. But why do we have restrictions on there? Because like if I'm doing, if I'm doing accounting work, I've got. One client coming to visit with me or, I mean, they can't come till, this would be unusual, but if they can't come till nine thirty or. Lady that does sewing and somebody stops by to pick up their stuff at nine thirty at night or early in the morning, I mean.
If you look at most of the restrictions, it's dealing with noise. So if I've got somebody that's running table saws and grinders and things like.
Fall under a noise.
By limiting, so it's not happening after quiet hours and I don't have to worry about.
I get it. I'm just kinda looking at stuff saying, are we really gonna have somebody going around saying, well, you can't, you can't do computer work. It's home business and you're.
Yeah, it's only gonna be, nobody's even gonna know unless there is the noise.
Plans, we're not going out. And a computer, that's not one we're gonna say you have to be these hours. We're talking things where they've got three horsepower motors or louder. It could cause some of those challenges.
Yeah, it just says, it just says flat out, no home occupation shall be conducted between the hours nine PM and seven AM and I'm thinking. Shouldn't it say, uh, that causes some kind of offense or no, I mean, I, you're right, nobody's gonna. Go arrest somebody for doing their computer work at ten o'clock at night, but. But technically they're breaking the law, right? So do we want, do we wanna have that in there?
Usually what ends up happening, this saves us when we have somebody coming in that is creating a nuisance. If I don't have it in there, I can't shut down. And so if they are minding their Ps and Qs, nobody's gonna go in and tell a computer guy.
Can't just add a simple phrase to that that says, uh, something about. Can't operate a home business that's causing a disturbance in the neighborhood.
What if the traffic is creating problems in the neighborhood? We haven't had.
We should address it.
If it does, we can address it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a big deal. I just, yeah, there's, they have some stuff in there that doesn't need to be.
Yeah, we tried to eliminate where we could. Problem is, is we see all the challenges that could happen. Because of our experience on different things happen and we go, oh, we had this happen and so we were glad we had that in our code to address it. Police officers probably did the same thing, Colin. There were times when you had to use your discretion to put a law in place. Because you've really had something that you go, it's not creating a problem, not gonna do anything, but now you crossed the line. I'm gonna have the law to back it up. You don't, don't confess. Okay, so let's go to number three then. The first one, Brianna. Oh, Randall, you've sat down there. Very first one we did, we just wanted fourth paragraph. And now I'm forgetting what we even talked about. Yeah, offsets and stuff, so it wasn't anything. Setbacks for sheds. Just basically if you're over a certain amount. You have to have six foot setback for garden sheds and things like that in the backyard or a shop. But if you're less than two hundred, you can go to the property line, as long as you're not draining onto the neighbor's yard or causing. So that's all that was, which is. So that was number one.
And you know, the police did share some concerns, I, I think, was a couple, didn't they, with you too, Colin, maybe? Um, I have a list of them for the parking section. Should I, could I like email that to you and maybe we could all?
But if we get time, let's go through them. If not, if we need to, we're gonna do another meeting if we don't get through everything.
And I'll, okay, I'll email it.
Okay, so this one.
Probably won't because I have a lot in this one. And I, I apologize, I'm, I'm a little, uh, OCD on this part because of forty years in my profession, but.
We're, we're, we're picking on the mayor on this one.
Yeah, I, I, I don't like taking out, well, either that or taking out, or somehow we need to. If we take out large cobble river rock, are not considered decorative rock. And then, so you do consider them decorative rock, then you get all these just gravel things everywhere, which to me is terribly ugly. And doesn't add to the, the nature of your community. So I would like to say, maybe cobble river rock could be used. Uh, it maybe if they're in conjunction with a, with some other, uh, decorative rock, you know, like you've seen some of them where they do a pattern. You know, maybe it's got some gravel in it, but then it's got some other colored rock or something and it looks nice. But, you know, if we let, if we take that. Oh, I can just put gravel everywhere and it, you know, to me, it's horrible.
Well, the sad part was we were allowing gravel. We weren't allowing the cobble rock. To me, a cobble rock is more of a landscape design than gravel.
Is there a definition of a large, what's the? When do we, yeah, but when do we, when do we stop with the gravel and start being large cobble rock?
I'm gonna defer to the mayor on that.
Is that, I mean, is there a definition of the, of the diameter size or something like that of a rock?
Large cobble is probably a two or two.
So I'm trying to get my brain in it cuz you know, I think I know what gravel looks like.
I've got decorative rock that's the three-quarter to an inch. But like you said, I've done it in ways where it's in flower beds and things like that and just in a certain part.
Yeah, and, and, and the other thing is. Personally, I think it'd be nice, even if you've got a gravel area, to require at least. You know, a tree every thirty, forty feet or something, or, or some kind of live plant material, um. Just so that it, just so it looks a little nicer. I mean, have you ever been to Court Lane? You drive around the city and it's beautiful. And in some other cities, you, you're like, this is kind of depressing.
Two thousand feet lower than.
Well, that's true, but there's.
Cause. Yeah, well, yeah, some in our neighborhood, I think it looks.
You have some that have gravel, just gravel.
But I just assumed it's cuz they don't wanna waste the water on.
They don't wanna want a lawn.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem with that if they wanna do a nice design with, with decorative rock and, and even gravel mixed in, but, but. You know, to, to plant a few trees and things like that and have some. Cuz I mean, you know, yeah, you do wanna save water. You also, I mean, if you're gonna get into the environmental stuff, you wanna be producing as much oxygen as you can do. And that's where the trees and, and the, the plant material comes in. You don't wanna just have a dry, desolate, you know. Nasty looking place.
Now, here's the challenge I have on that mayor. We don't regulate what people put in their yard.
Yeah, I don't think we should.
We're not saying you have that trees, we're not saying you can or can't use. Now, this one may fall more upon commercial. When they're doing their parking landscapes, you know, the parking islands and things like that. That may fall in that or, uh, buffer zones. So I see your point on that one, mayor. But in that same one, we do require the trees and shrubs. So they can't just do that, but they would have the rock as the underlay.
Alan, my, my objection to even discussing it here is that, isn't this a definition section? So why are we prescribing landscape must be maintained as a, that's, that's a prescriptive thing. It's not a definition. And I think. We're, we're kind of bleeding into a, in, in this, on this page. Discussion about what should and should happen in the code. This is definitions.
This is strictly a definition and we just wanted to remove that. But we do address what they need to have in those landscape strips buffers and that they need to have the trees and the shrubs. So those are still there.
Yeah, I read that. I just, I, I just, I guess if, if we take that sentence out, then. Then people are like, oh, we can just put gravel everywhere. I mean, I mean, they can't, but.
What did I, look at this, you look at one of the we've done over there on Pioneer Road. We've have a clear down the whole east side there between that and the sidewalk.
It's got a lot of, it's got a lot of plant material growing in it.
Good.
But, you know, we use it right now, we do, cities, so.
Well, I'm glad you brought up that on Pioneer Road because I think about twenty years ago, we ran into some problems with developers. With that right of way being actually city property. But when they came in and got approval, they didn't have any kind of a landscape plan. Or even a maintenance plan with that. We have that over in Stone Bridge on Seventh North. We had it over there on Pioneer Road and so the city went in and put in all that, uh, river rock and, and did that.
Violated their own code?
It's, it's one of those gray areas where it's city property, but there was no maintenance requirement.
Keith would yell at.
So we still have that in, on Stone Bridge, on Seventh North and they're in front of Stone Bridge all along that. Where it's just basically weeds. I'll go in and mow it, uh, once or twice a year. More as needed, but, um.
Yeah, they're kind of a no man's land. Yeah, they're kind of a no man's land, unfortunately.
Yeah, there's, we didn't really know, it was just one of those things with the plat, with the final plat that came in, nobody really looked at.
That particular.
Who's gonna take care of this?
So we lock that in there?
Well, so here's the thing, if we, if we listen to what Randall said, this is a definition, it's not a code. So all we're saying is you can use river rock or decorative rock in your landscaping. It's not defining where, when, or how, that's coming later in the code. So does that make sense, mayor?
Then even the next line can go out.
Yeah.
Landscaping must be maintained, that's prescriptive, that's not a definition, that's, that, that happens elsewhere, you say.
A question, why should landscaping be maintained in its original?
Oh, yeah, that's a good point, uh, I meant.
Landscape.
Yeah, I would say, I would say maybe the original purpose is okay, but not the original design, cause yeah, things are gonna change.
When we get down to the other, we'll look at that, we'll take it out of the definition, because it doesn't need to be here, but we'll address it as we get farther down.
Yeah, it, it does have it down later too.
Good points, this is why we do this. This is the definition of a pervious surface, cause I tell people that, and they look at me and they don't, what's pervious? So it's just to explain, it's anything that will allow the water to percolate through that area. Let's go on to the next. Screening, just a definition, again, what are we trying to accomplish with this? We've just gotta have some way of explaining to people, this is what we mean by screening, basically visually shielding or obscuring. And up or butting a nearby user structure from another type of vegetation walls or fence. This really comes into play when we get into, uh, higher density housing with parking lots and they're right next to a little residential.
Or business.
Or business.
Cause they never follow the one out by me.
They still haven't got that, they told us they were working on it.
They never have done that one though. I built a big shop to cover them up, so.
Oh, we're good.
They were supposed to change that out, okay, so let's scroll on. We just added screening landscaping into this, some of these, Katie's very good at catching. Let's be consistent in our language, let's make sure we're calling things the same in different parts. We had one when we get to parking, you had guest in one and visitor in the other, and so we cleaned them up into the same, so when people look at it, there's that consistency. Basically says landscaping and applicable irrigation system must be all maintained by property owners. Or in cases of right away, the adjacent property owner, this is where you wanna remove.
Yeah, design, I thought, uh, maybe purpose is okay, because you want the purpose to maybe stay there, but the design could change. Over time.
I agree with that.
And I think we need to have a city that, that different people, like, look forward to where we can produce more zero escaping. Low water, I mean, we gotta be more future looking here, and, you know, original design may consume much more water than we really here can have in the future.
Yeah, the designs can change over time, so I would just take that out.
Let's make an order that, we're gonna remove the original purpose. The original design, sorry.
Just take out the word design, that's all you need, just take out the word design, I mean, purp- yeah, design.
We want design to disappear. The red stuff, we've moved to a different place and consolidated it in the one. We've added this pervious surface, especially in our landscape strips, we want that water to be able to penetrate rather than run off into streets. In that section, we also are very cognizant of the site triangle, making sure people aren't putting landscaping that's blocking that.
And evergreen trees is a good ad, because like out there at Walmart, we required them to put in those columnar trees, and then. Two years later, we're like, those are blocking everybody's view from pulling out, cause it's better to have a tree with a canopy, so you can see under it, yeah.
One of the other things we yet that hadn't been addressed is landscaping underneath power lines. Cause we come in and require them to put a deciduous tree in there, the next thing you know, they're cutting the tops out of it, if they, or gotta stay fifteen feet away from that. So we're leaving that to where staff and that can look at and go, okay, this is an area where.
Hey, there are trees now that, that, you know, grow, that, they're exactly designed for that, that can grow low enough that they won't get into.
And that's what we'll do, is recommend to them, you're under a power line, you need to find something that won't exceed this height.
But will also be high enough that.
To clear the.
Like the grower riverside, those trees, they're low because of the power lines, but anything higher will hit the power lines, but you can't see around them because.
Well, the difficulty there is, is I'm telling you, you gotta be ten feet up, and they're telling you, you gotta be fifteen feet down, so you've got a tree that's two feet up of shrubbery. And in those occasions, we may be able to come in and say, great, just put shrubbery. Do your shrubs like you need to, let's not put the trees, let's not create a hazard. For the driving or the power company.
Exactly.
Something else, I think it's, oh, I think it's further on down with, uh, like screening of big utility areas and stuff.
This one just calls into these different zones, and here's your requirements. Route in like your landscape strip, the two inch caliber tree, maximum thirty feet spacing. Trees need to be trimmed to ten feet above the curb, with caveat in case of this. Uh, minimum five, five gallon container shrubs in every thirty feet foot section. That's, I think we just moved this one and put it in this place, so it's not new.
Yeah, that's been in there before.
So it was just moved, and then we followed through with the other zones.
Hey Alan, just on that too, as you're guiding people through that, just help them to understand that, you know. They don't have to space out the five shrubs.
And we do that, and we've also got an area in here on our highway twenty corridor, where we've come in and says average width. Because you look at Mountain West out here now, they got a confusion between the guy that built the building and the owner. And we come in and says, we were told you weren't going to use this lot, and so now you're putting the equipment clear to the road. We need our highway, um, landscaping, and he goes, no, that was never the plan, I'm going. Yeah, it was, I says, you need to call your contractor, he told me you weren't going to do it, well, they didn't bury any water out there. And so we've allowed them to come in and use rocks and landscaping deals other than trees. And they've spaced them out, they use some of them to park their equipment on, and they've still got some more development to do. But we had that power along there, we wanna be able to make some adjustments in certain circumstances, and it's more because that's a display, it's not a story. And it works as both, so we'll get into that later on, this one just does your same thing into your business centers. Uh, medium density on, uh, that you have those same things, and the sad part is when we do our deal, it doesn't break it into the. The subsets and everything else, so you can see it, but it's basically doing that same thing. And when you get into these and you're adjacent to a lower density residential zone, then you have to have that ten foot wide landscape buffer. Butting the property line, but this buffer's either gotta be trees, shrubs, or a combination of, or just fences. That will block those lights from penetrating into a little residential.
Yeah, this is one of the spots, and there's a couple other spots where it, uh, low shrubs, which I don't know if you really need to specify low shrubs. Cause sometimes you're actually wanting a higher shrub that will, like you say, block the lights or different things like that, so I would just take out low and just put. Tree shrubs.
Strike the low out.
Same thing in the next one down that, that says button for storage areas and stuff like that.
You guys see in this paragraph? Okay, let's scroll back. Low right there. These are just stuff that was moved or taken out.
Low is a relative word, clearly.
You had to find low, it's lower than a tree and. This is just adding in that landscape, they've got to submit a landscape plan to us to look at, we want everybody to do that on these areas. So that we can look at it and make sure we have problems with power lines, do we have problems with site triangles, if you keep them out of that, so. Uh, even people that are coming in and wanna tear it out completely, we're gonna make them submit a new plan if they're modifying it, to make sure they're meeting all the requirements.
The front yard display is what you're talking about out there, if they're, if they're doing some kind of a nice display that, then they can, they can.
Then we'll treat it more like a front.
They use alternate landscaping, so they could do some sort of, maybe some, just in the corners or whatever.
And if you come down twenty and look at back at Mountain West, they've done it, if you look at John Deere, they've landscaped next to the freeway, most of it's grass. Or a few little trees, but then they display their equipment. So when they do that, we kinda have to, we don't wanna stop them from doing that, because that's a sales point for those guys.
You know, did we have number four where it says must be maintained destruct, did we have that somewhere else where it, uh, yeah.
We moved up above into one spot, so you'll see it once instead of seeing it in every single section.
Is, I, I think I missed the one above, and I saw this, and I'm like, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, we don't wanna take that out.
Now that was moved. Open storage areas, this is a little different than a display yard, this is where people are storing supplies or equipment or work trucks. Where it's not for sale, it's just, it's ready to keep my stuff.
That's the one I noticed, take the low out of that one too, Kyle, or it just says low shrubs.
But the idea behind this one is if you look at electrical wholesale, they put a cinder block fence or a fence with privacy. To protect that yard, so we don't see all the garbage in the yard, so we run into those, American Supply out there. They did theirs, they put a complete privacy fence around theirs for their storage yard. Uh, we've had a few that don't do that, power company doesn't, their grandfather, they do a good job of keeping things neat and clean. But if we ever got that position where somebody wanted to have a junky one.
You talking about Rocky Mountain Power?
Yeah, they have, their yards kept very nice.
Well, and, and we actually, they, uh, they did a full landscape strip all along the side.
We're, we're asking them to fence buffer, so that you can't see in that yard to do that.
And that's more commercial, correct?
Correct, yeah, this, this is commercial here or, uh, multifamily. But utility yards and stuff like that, that's strictly industrial or commercial, it's doing that. Utility yards, uh, they have to be screened with at least a seven foot tall decorative masonry wall or privacy fence. So if they wanna put up chain link or something and put the privacy strips, we'll. Force them to do masonry, they could do vinyl if they want.
And that's pretty much six foot.
Seven is what we're requiring.
On a privacy fence also, or?
For the utility yards. Or what?
For block versus privacy, there's, most of your privacy usually runs about six foot.
They do, but you can get eight, you can get ten, you know, you can go to the higher ones when you need to. And once they get up to that, I think once we break seven, then they have to have a building permit. So we get seven going, that's a pretty good, most people even in Ohio pickup aren't gonna be looking over that. And so it kinda just protects the way that looks, again, they have to be approved by zoning administration. So myself or Kyle are looking at that going, okay, you've met the requirements, you're keeping out of your site triangles, and you're blocking the things you need to. We look at those on site plans, somebody calls up and says, we wanna put a new fence in, Brianna had a neighbor that did it. Put a fence in, she called and goes, Alan, can they do this? Yeah, they submitted a plan, we looked at it and approved it, just because of the circumstances where it was at, so. We wanna try to do that now, to be proactive, rather than wait for somebody to mess up and send them out going, and then I gotta spend another five thousand dollars to move it. We don't wanna do that to citizens. Natalie and I are looking at all the dig lanes now. Check out, you know, well, the fences are. Yeah, make sure that they, they all come into Kyle and then they can see those, and that, it's amazing how many fence companies. Won't put a fence in until the dig line's been through, smart, very smart.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Setbacks, um, this is again in utility yards, ten feet from the property line. Uh, so again, we don't want this right up next to our sidewalk, we want them off of that back away. So it's not so overpowering to pedestrians or people on that street. And again, they have to landscape with the trees along that setback. And he made me exclude water tanks. He says, no, we're, we're, we don't have to be.
They're so beautiful.
They are, we have, we have a project, although we want you to.
But we do, we do require you to screen the other equipment.
Well, at least have them fenced. We want you to work with the college, art students up at the college and paint like Nemo one. Finding Nemo and put all of that on the water tank, and in a few years, you can do Little Mermaid, Shark Tales, I think it'd be fun to change it up. That was our rambling thoughts. Front yard buffer, um, this is for parking, wasn't it, Kyle? I missed that.
Yeah, parking and front yard setbacks.
But this deals a lot with our multifamily, if they want to park in that front right away. We're telling them, you have to have a ten foot buffer back of sidewalk on your property. And it's gotta be landscaped enough, so you're reducing the impact of that car, we don't want cars parking right up against the sidewalk. Ninety nine out of ten, they're either swinging doors over him or the front end hanging over. Back away, so it kinda keeps your streets looking better.
Do we wanna take out the low and? Yeah, probably might as well take it out everywhere.
Anywhere we find that.
Well, it's gonna be kinda hard to do over on Chad and Angela, in that area where the house sits back fifteen feet from the sidewalk. To park your vehicles off the street, the whole idea is to get them off the street during the winter ordinance.
And we have some that are grandfathered in, we can't change.
This is for parking lots, though.
This is big parking lots for multifamily, so we haven't got into the residential side, but. Side and rear buffers, again, uh, five foot minimum. Uh, we're trying to keep it so you're not going into your neighbors and those types of things. Um, just buffering them so they don't happen in there, and landscaping to take care of that. Uh, large parking lots, this is one where it is required that once you exceed fifty parking spaces, we want you to start breaking it up with islands. So that we don't just have this asphalt jungle out there, we start seeing, okay, here's a little bit of trees, and they put that in there, tree shrubs. But they can also count that towards their snow storage, so we tell them it's not a total waste, you do get that advantage.
Waste, we need waste, I'm offended by that.
I agree with you, I like more trees.
Hey, uh, just so that, you know, where we're taking out, where low shrubs, I guess, the only thing is, we wanna always make sure, and I guess already do this, but. You know, in the site triangles, they do need to be low shrubs, right?
It's called out in the side triangle, they can't exceed three feet, and they gotta cut up to ten.
Yeah, okay.
And can they put the river rock in that, if they want, or a little?
And it falls back, you know, I mean, Randall stated it very, very good. Somewhere in here, we've got to figure out, how do we reduce water, as a city, we're struggling for every gallon we need, yeah. So if we can find ways to make our landscaping less usage of water.
Yeah, you know, like, if you notice on that subject, go to Arizona, they've got mostly zero escaping. But they still plant a lot of trees, and they, and they use drip irrigation and things like that where, you know, they just water enough. What the trees need, they're not watering tons of grass and all that kinda stuff, but, so they're cutting down a lot on the water, but they're still keeping a nice look. Because they've got the greenery of the trees.
One of the things I learned when I took a landscaping class, they told us that in Vegas, this was clear back in, I think it was the eighties. Eighty, early nineties, that they were telling us, Vegas come in and says, we want you to cut out all grass, all trees, cause we're trying to cut back on the usage of water. So everybody did, and all of a sudden they found their city temperatures were climbing, and it got so high, but then they come back and says. We need you to plant trees and put some grass back in to lower the temps.
Called heat islands, you need these heat islands that are just get unbearable.
Yeah, and they just got so bad, you can go too far one way or the other.
Gotta be a good balance.
Okay, let's keep going. Again, stop me if you run into something you wanna say or talk about.
That's it for this one.
Yeah, I think that whole issue of, of landscaping, zero escaping, probably will, I need to meet him, but it's in itself, just talk about how we use water on. Trees, I mean, just like you said, they, they, Arizona's done that. Arizona, we're not that arid, but it's a high desert, and we use a lot of water to block grass, but.
The only difference between us and Arizona is we have. The only difference between us and Arizona is we have more reservoirs and we're at a higher elevation. Other words, we'd be in the same boat. Because we don't get that much water here, our reservoir is what carries us through.
This is maybe even a di- a little different subject, it's, I was gonna say out in the weeds, it's literally, literally, you know. I struggle a little bit with. The idea of. Trying to make people do things that maybe they don't wanna do or whatever. Uh versus the effect that they have on neighbors. You know, and the reason I say that is we got a good friend who is trying to sell her home. And some of the neighboring properties around them just look terrible, I mean weeds and everything and. And it's 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 a, it's a pretty bad effect on the, on their prop. So so I'm going, you know, this property right versus this property right. You know, is there some sort of a level that we could s- that we could say? If it's kind of become a nuisance to the neighborhood type thing, we can ask them to, you know, we we can have the authority to. Maybe help them be able to do something better, I mean some education, things like that. You know, because because it does have an affect on the neighbors, you know, if you live next door to a home that looks terrible like that. Yeah, I mean, I don't know, and and you get, and the other thing is. You know, we've talked about the reason we do L I Ds in neighborhoods is because we wanna keep the neighborhood looking decent. So that it doesn't turn into a ghetto type situation, and and that can kinda happen. With landscaping too, I mean, if a place looks abandoned, then you know, it kinda, uh people move out and you get. You know, drug dealers or whatever, you know, that's where you see a lot of, in these bigger towns, you see a lot of. You know, the, it's the older, crappier, nasty looking homes where the fentanyl dealers or whatever they're, what do they cook, meth, meth dealers move in and stuff like that.
They're doing that in Summerfield and it's nice there.
Well, yeah, but it's, I mean.
I was hoping Spencer's in here because I would ask him, is this something that would be better handled on the municipal code or in the development code? Is that something we can list more as a nuisance?
Doesn't Natalie already do that?
Well, you could do it under the mu- municipal and do it as a nuisance ordinance. Cause I don't, I have a lot less power to go back out and I don't have the people to go out and police. Every single one thing, oh, your landscaping's not right, your grass is an issue, oh damn.
Well, yeah, I I'm I would never advocate going to that.
Having the the, having the municipal that says you've become a major nuisance to the neighborhood.
Yeah, and I struggle with it because, you know, my philosophy philosophy is. Let's stay out of people's business as much as we can unless it's a problem for others, and that's one, that's kinda what it becomes a problem, that's why it becomes a problem. And your community, you know, and then be something.
Usually if it's an adverse effect on the neighborhood, then I can, you can pull a nuisance code in.
Yeah, and maybe that's where it needs to, that's where, maybe that's where it needs to belong, probably doesn't have anything to do with this.
Mine is it's in here, that landscaping has to be maintained. Actually, I'll fall under that one and pull it out. But the trouble is, is the landscaping I'm talking about is landscape strips.
No, I don't, I don't think you wanna pull it out, let's leave it down.
Let's jump to number five.
Alan? Um you do have an ordinance on on vacant lots. And so you're already enforcing a certain element of.
Has to be mowed.
You know, nuisance, the problem with landscaping is it, it takes a lot of work. Bushes and trees have to be pruned, things have to be removed.
Choose the right ones. But yeah, I will agree with you, it is a lot more work, you know, in the landscape than in a vacant lot, you just hire somebody to kind of mow it off.
I think there needs to be a minimum, you know, something's abandoned, then obviously we have a any issue.
Okay.
I think what honestly what the solution to that is just providing more of a housing that doesn't have landscaping to be, people will take care of. Cause then people who are, you know, young, they're, they don't have the time to do. Go out and move along and take care of landscaping, they don't have the money to afford that kinda thing, they they have a place to live where they don't have. And and ol- ol- older people, elderly people who lose the ability to do that, and people in their home that they've been in the generation that that. Yeah, you rent a problem when you try to enforce, you know, a level with providing resources, you can't.
Well, and I just, we put in our yard recently, it was fifteen grand, you know, some people don't have the money, they don't have that, even if they don't need to live in low income housing. They just don't have the funds for that, so I think they have to be careful to not.
And typically in landscaping, they use to figure thirty percent of the value of the home is what you put into your landscaping. I don't know if that rule still applies, Mayor, that's what they taught us in.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they, that's what they taught us too, but.
Doesn't quite fit nowadays.
Yeah, maybe, well, I don't know, it might, but uh, but you know, you don't, you don't have to spend a million dollars to have a fairly easy to. Maintain yard either, you know, if you don't put in a lot of.
So here's, here's a question for the group, what's the most expensive landscape thing in your yard? Item or whatever the question, Mayor, you can't answer. Your lawn, your lawn is the most expensive feature in the yard. Maintain, it's the one thing you have to mow constantly, fertilize constantly, it takes more water, takes more work, trees. You do have to prune them, you know, I mean, if you got some really extreme stuff, Mayor, but overall, we were always taught. Your lawn can be one of your most expensive items.
And either, it either looks good or it doesn't.
Alan, um I just wanted to say, um you know, there's a lot of places where. Um in new subdivisions, and of course, you know, it's hard to go back and and police landscaping. Um I'm looking at the, uh the window and look, looking at my neighbor's landscaping, which is dandelions. Um but a lot of developers in other areas as as part of their uh requirements or builders or whatever. You know, in, they put in a front yard and sprinklers. And I've never really seen that much here, but that's just part of the, you know, of the price people pay. But that is a going forward thing, you know, that can be encouraged, doesn't do much good to go back, I know, but. It's like Brianna says, it's expensive and you've gotta be careful if people keep things, you know, they do need to keep their. Abandoned autos and their garbage picked up, but uh I don't think you can require that kind of a cost on people. You know, they need to keep the weeds down, but that's about it, but anyway, some places they do that.
You surprised me Sally, I didn't know you were online, thank you for attending.
Oh yes, I'm here.
One of the aspects of that that is a challenge anymore is people are going to natural landscape yards. Or they just plant wildflowers and and different types of stuff and they just let it go, so it mirrors more what nature looks like. And that, they even all still need a certain amount of maintenance to keep them in perspective. Okay, we have about seventeen minutes, let's start into the parking, cause I know this is the one you're all just thrilled to start, especially Kellen. He's here to uh give his perspective of what happens on the enforcement side of this. And so it becomes quite a challenge in doing this, so again, we've made a stab at this to try to mitigate some of those challenges. Hopefully we have pinpointed them, if not, we want advice from you guys, so. Change the, a lot of this, we just pulled out a lot of the wordy stuff. That just went on and on about what we really were trying to do and the whole bit. Building permit is required if you're going to construct or alter. Uh any building, sidewalk, driveway, carport, parking area, or any structure. We wanted that in there simply because a lot of people will go to remodel a parking lot and do not get a building permit. And they're making changes that need to be addressed, are you removing parking, are you doing something, taking out landscaping that should be in there? So we want you to come in and follow those so that it's getting done.
Do you count have a question about that top one?
Kellen, anytime you need to weigh in.
Do you have a question about the top one? You had some input on that very top one? You talked about how that's vague.
I, yeah, I think it's a little bit on the, on the, on the vague side and simply because. To me, it looks like it's open for interpretation on there.
It is to the point until you get further down and and you start getting the specifics that go along with it. Yeah, this is just our overall objective, then we get down into here's the actual statutes of what you have to do, that's a good thing to bring up. Does that help you, Kellen?
Yes.
Okay. Um we did that one. Okay. Number of parking spaces, we just put in there that it shall determine, it says. Uh shall make a determination now just to clean up the language, but now we're getting into the specific parking requirements based on the use. So we're starting out with residential and this is strictly off-street parking. Streets are not allowed to be used to count towards your uh number of spaces that you're you're required to have. So they have to find their ground to do this. Single family, this is attached, detached, any of that type of stuff, two spaces per unit. So if it's a house, you gotta have at least two parking spaces. Now, the challenge comes in, if I have a two-car garage, I can put two in the garage and two behind it. And our setbacks should keep them off of the sidewalk in most of them, because we require twenty foot setup. And our idea is to try to keep them from parking across the sidewalk, we wanna keep those free and moving through.
That works for one-car garage and a driveway leading up to it, right? As I, as I understand it.
Yeah, if you have a one-car garage and you have the twenty seats, you've got two parking spaces, you meet that requirement.
So in Summerfield, are they supposed to be parking, are the townhouses supposed to be parking in the parking lots?
In the back.
Yeah, they all.
Park on the street.
They could park on the streets during the day, the only.
They're doing it in the winter too, yeah.
It doesn't stop them as long as they meet the requirements for each one of those units, then my part's done, then it becomes a key issue when they're trying to.
And it comes to police department too, because I mean, like say they don't park up back, park up front, it's easy walking the house.
The next ones are getting to multifamily, so this is anything that gets into our M D Rs, H D Rs, mixed use. That is one of those standard two parking spaces per unit, if they're two bedroom or more. What we added in is we also want ten percent visiting parking, cause we've run into this in multiple places. Well, you've met enough with your students, but if mom comes to visit, where does she park? So we're saying you gotta do that, one of the caveats we added and it shows it down here a little farther. We've added in there that in certain circumstances, if they sign it correctly, they can say after this time, anybody can park.
Oh yeah.
So students or anybody can park, so it's just during that daytime. But they have to sign it showing that after this time, anybody can.
So how, up to how many people can there be in each unit then? For this?
It's a family, so we, we don't regulate how many people.
But I mean, I guess what I mean is there's two spaces, is that enough?
We've never had a lot of trouble in multifamily, dormitory's different and that's separate, we have that in a whole separate category.
That's one space per occupant.
Yeah, now if you look in high-density residential, one and two, if you only have one bedroom. We drop it back to one and a half spaces per, cause usually in those type of situations, you have a husband and wife. They're usually attending college, they don't always have two vehicles, but we're still putting back in, we want that ten percent visiting parking. Anybody have any heartaches with that one? And so we can move down to now we're into dormitory style housing. This is where you have one space per occupant, in everywhere but the pet. Within the pet zone, we still allow them with that seventy-five percent reduction, so I wanted to clarify that. But now, and it has a ten percent visiting parking in that. Plus, we've added in now, you've gotta have one space per employees at the highest shift. Cause we weren't accounting for maintenance crews and managers and staff that are working in there. So we were running into people having to park on streets to meet those requirements, so we've added that into.
And how do you evaluate the highest shift?
They have to tell us. You're back to that same thing, if I run into problems, then I go back to the manager and say, what's going on? You told us this, you can usually get a pretty good idea. Do they have shifts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
With like a Somerset, the one that just went in across from Oak Park. And the big problem they were having there during.
Sundance.
Sundance, that's what it was. Like, um so this is to prevent things like that happening with all the students have no idea where to park.
Here's the weird thing that happened with Sundance. That whole parking on all those streets is not signed or wasn't signed at the time. A lot of kids coming from out of town that were attending were parking on those streets because they could walk quickly to the campus from there. So it wasn't sundances followed along, they may have had some. But the majority of that was kids who were just the only place left in town I could park, cause you permitted all the other streets around campus. I have, they're all gone, I can't buy one, so now we have gone out, Keith had his crew, they've signed that. And you can actually get permits to park on there, or you have to have a permit to park in that area. Some of them are ruled strictly as residential, if I remember right, aren't they Keith? Porter Park, we get a timeline.
And I know the pedestrian emphasis isn't what we're talking about right now, but it's not working, the seventy-five percent.
Yes, it seems to be so far because when our problem started is when we were dropping clear back to thirty-five. And then we had all these kids went home at Thanksgiving and mom's going, oh my poor girl, she can't, she can't play in the snow, she's got it, that was cool. Seem to be doing good, I don't know if it's a hundred percent fixed, but we're doing a lot better. Assisted living, um we left it at the quarter spaces per bed. But again, we added in that one space per employee at the highest shift, that's what's killing us at the homestead. They didn't account for any of their employees, they've got a lot of their employees.
So you eliminated multifamily dwellings for elderly, what?
We just switched it to the nursing assisted.
But with those, you were allowing one, you you only had one space per unit, now you've cut that back to. To a quarter of space per bed.
Per bed, yeah, which is.
And you, but you blew, you've lo- lumped the multifamily dwellings into ner- into like an assisted living center, so. I think we're, I think you could find some trouble there if you're talking about a. Um like for example, cottages? Yeah. But that, so that that.
Does not fall under assisted or group homes?
That falls under a, an attached or a detached home, it's like a townhome. Will determine where you fall in this category.
Not only that, but like nursing assisted living group homes, those will all require like an.
Yeah, yeah, and those, and those deals, the employees is the problem, they kill a lot of employees, so they've got to account for them.
It really killed us in that one, so let's scroll up a little further. We are, when do you wanna cut off, cause we've got to clean up, get ready for council mayor.
We got about two minutes.
Okay, so short term, we left alone, we cleared some of this out because we clarified it, let's scroll down into this.
Well, we get, no, we get a few more legs clocks a little faster, we got about five minutes.
So if you look in this, we added in some things into these categories so that we had a little bit more clarification. It was like in the other one, we just wanted to understand where do they fit within these, and these are ones we have run into. And we wanna make them fit within that, uh professional office, retailer, other public areas. We didn't really list where professionals were, so your accountants, your lawyers, stuff like that. We didn't, it was just under all other services, we wanted some clarification.
So what are we doing like over there like Pizza Hut when we, I mean, the whole employees take up the whole parking now, there's nothing for people coming in. Is that clearing this up on this new?
Well, in that case, they should have. They're not a sit-down restaurant anymore, they're takeout.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
They're probably one, we just did three per thousand, and that killed us. So we need to address that one.
Yeah, definitely need to look at that because we forget the employees. We think, okay, there's ten parking spots up there and that's okay for people coming, now you got ten employees, now there's zero.
We run into that with, uh, we do it with fast food and maybe we classify them as fast food.
Oh, yeah.
It's fast food, we do it by the number of seats inside and also the highest number of people on shift. We've added that too and it's a little further down.
Just curious, the ten, ten spaces per sit-down restaurant. That's not, is that limiting anybody? Is there anybody coming in saying, I can't bring my restaurant in because you're requiring a full ten parking spaces? For thousands.
Well, if you're talking a full sit-down restaurant, take the Hickory. This is not someplace you go in and get your meal within two, three minutes, sit down and eat, you're gone in ten. These are people that are coming in and they're enjoying the experience, they want to.
Is that typical? I'm just wondering if that. In the industry, okay.
We haven't had a challenge with it yet. If we do, we can address them individually. And we, we've had two or three proposed and they don't seem to fight it. In fact, most of them go, I don't think you have enough.
Yeah, but they're hoping they have at least ten at a time.
They want to have enough for customers.
Okay, let's scroll up. You get into this. We added that one space per employee at highest shift. And that's for your fast food right through things like that. We did clarification on the theaters, we just added more stuff. Uh, one space per seat, did change the requirement. More again, putting in names that people recognize of what's going. Schools, daycares, we again cover this. Uh, two spaces per teacher on largest shift, that's the one we wanted to address, right? And then the kindergarten, elementary, these just mirror what we have up in the daycare one. So that's a duplication, we'll make the modification that we talked about there. Uh, high school, everything else, technical college, this is the same. So we can scroll on through these.
Alan should be worded up, maybe it's a little bit different on employees instead of just.
It's just one space per.
We say per teacher, but they do not count paras.
This is the one, remember, we modified in our daycare.
Yeah, I knew that.
That'll, it'll be fixed in here too. So we'll just match them. So that was one that overlapped between the two, so. We, we corrected it in the first one, we'll make sure it fits, fits in here also. Uh, okay, let's scroll on up. This one is a chart on parking ratios, sizes, things like that. Drive aisles. And this is one that Joe pulled up. Out of their technical manual saying, if you're gonna park at this angle, here's how much driveway you need. So this is more of us making sure they meet fire requirements. Cause down below, it has to meet fire department engineer standards to work that. Higher buildings require wider driveways. Be able to fight fires, so. That's all fairly standard and it's engineering standards. But just be aware of that's what those are. Scroll on down. Connectivity, this goes to when you're building next to another subdivision, we want to make sure that you have connectivity. So the people don't have to go out to the main road and then come back again.
Better wrap up.
We will stop at this point. Uh, one we got left, about eight, ten pages. We will schedule one more meeting. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right. We'd like to call this meeting to order of the Rexburg City Council. On the evening of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. We'd like to start out our meeting, um, by acknowledging that we had an earlier work meeting at five o'clock with the combined city council. And the planning and zoning did a work meeting to talk about. Uh, a lot of different aspects of the Rexburg Development Code. And so if you have any. Questions about that, you can, I think that recording is available online, that you can review that if you'd like to. Uh, at this time, we'd like to go ahead with the formal start of our city council meeting with a. An opening prayer by, I've asked council member Brianna Johnson to offer the opening prayer for us, following which we'll have council member. Council President Mike Walker will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear heavenly father, we're so thankful for this beautiful day and, um, for. Beautiful city that we live in. We're so thankful for the, our neighbors and for everything we do for each other. We ask you to please be with us tonight, help us to, uh, make good decisions and to. Um, be aware of the, the needs around us and what we can do to help. Please help us that we can all. Travel home in safety when this meeting ends and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Will we all stand? Follow me in the path of allegiance.
United States of America. Consider the republic for which it stands. One nation, I mean, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all very much. All right, we'd like to go ahead at this time with the roll call of our city council members, please.
Councilmember E Erickson. Councilmember Johnson.
Yeah.
Council President Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers. Councilmember. E Erickson. I did, uh, beg pardon, C and E are both present. And then Councilmember Reeser.
All right, we have a full council tonight. That's great. All right, item number four on the agenda is public comment. First of all, we'll ask for any comments that anyone would like to make. Anything that you'd like to make us aware of that is not on the agenda. And, and after which, we will have a little bit of an extended public comment. Uh, by, we have a presentation from, uh, our Ms. Rexburg, Avery Simkins. Who has an excellent platform that she's just gonna tell us a little bit about before she heads off to the, uh. The Miss Idaho Competition. So is there anyone that would like to, uh. Speak about anything that's not on the agenda during this time? If you would like to, please come to the podium. And state your name and address for us. Is there anyone that would like to say anything? Is there anyone online that would, has their hand up? All right, if there is, are no public comments, then we will go ahead and. If, if you're ready, we'll turn the time of due, if you're not, we can do one more item first. Okay, then let's, we'll adjust the agenda just a little bit. We'll go ahead with our committee reports from our council members and, uh. So let's go ahead and just start down here on the end with Councilmember Colin Erickson.
I only have a couple things to report, uh. The golf board did meet, everything out there is going good, our golf course looks very good this year and it's filling up. Well-used, which is good, we always like to see and see. And the other thing is from the school board. Is that the graduations, in fact, I'm missing it right now, Central High graduations tonight. Been the first I've missed in about thirty years. And, uh, because of this meetings and then Madison's is tomorrow night. Hopefully. Um, we can get good, good attendance from the city councils, be there. And that's all I have to report. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
We recently had a Trails, Parks and Rec. Committee meeting, uh, Councilmember Erickson was there too, we were both there. Um, we talked about doing some service projects at different parks this summer, so. I hope we'll get some of that together and residents can participate if they'd like to.
Okay, thank you very much. Council President Walker.
Mayor's Youth Advisory Board met. Last week with Flower Day. And then they had their closing social the week before that. And the ADA Oversight Committee met, but they did not have enough aboard, they did not have a quorum, so. They basically just discussed a few things, but that's, there was nothing decided there.
And can I just, uh. Make an addition to the, uh, the Flower Day, yeah, like you say, it was organized by Mary, uh, who is our. Count, our, uh, staff liaison to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board and we had. Quite a few of our Mayor's Youth kids there to help organize it and they did an excellent job. We had almost eighty people show up. Uh, helped us plant the flowers on Main Street and here in front of City Hall. And it looks great and we ordered perfect weather. It was raining up until we started planting and then the sun came out. We planted and then it started raining again, so it was perfect flower planting weather, so that worked out really well. We, we appreciate all the volunteers that helped. We had, we had families from the, from the city, we had. Four-H kids from Rexburg and Sugar City, we had, uh. College, university students, uh, we had a really good mix of people that came and helped, so that was great. Councilmember Chambers.
Mr. Mayor, I have been gone for the past two and a half weeks, just got back a few hours ago. So I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Eric Erickson.
The only thing, just to follow up with Brianna, um. We met as Parks, um. They're gonna be very busy this summer with both parks and, and the recreation programs. In one of the meetings that I attended this last week, and I can't remember which one, there was some discussion about, um. Some, the revival of the trails of Madison County. Um, and I thought you might be interested about that, Brianna. They've got some money. Available, so they, they wanted to, they want to partner up with the city, uh, Parks and Rec. With the county to improve the trail system and connect trail systems, trails together, so. Thought that was a, a, a good thing. So, but that's all I have to report.
Are they gonna come to, are we gonna join up our committee with them at some point?
It, it was just, it was just thrown out there and whatever meeting it was I was, I was at, but there's some interest from the county. In kind of combining resources and, and, um. Uh, just to improve the trail system throughout the county and the, and within the city.
It turns out it's more of kind of a connection, it's not, uh, it's, it's really what their. Their guy. Came and talked to us about the other day was they've, they've got a grant to, to put a trail from. The roundabout out by the Hibbert Church along the road there to the other roundabout and then come around the corner to the golf course. And they were wondering what side of the road we would think would be best and stuff like that. And so we want to basically connect it at the golf course. And then have the trail continue from the golf course, you know, on down to Main Street.
Yeah, and their plans are to put a trail on the frontage road that they're building also. Uh, from.
Oh, yeah, down this.
South of Rexburg, down to the, to Thornton. So our connection to that trail also, so.
Yeah, just trying to get some good trail systems connected so that people, they're more usable for people. Okay, yeah, thank you. Councilmember Reeser.
Uh, yeah, we met as a Legacy Flight Museum Board and talked about, uh. The, the past airshows and, and future ones and how they want to do that. And they talked about some possibilities of, um. Because of cost and how long it takes to get. Acts in, uh, with, with airplanes and things like that. They talked about maybe doing an every other year program where. Where on the off-year, we could do a pancake breakfast and some drag races at the airport, cause evidently that's pretty popular. Uh, getting to use that, that landing strip for some drag races and things like that. And also we had a real good discussion about moving the airport and, and, uh. The impact that'll have on the, the museum and things like that too, so. Very good, very good meeting.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So, yeah, if any of you have any questions about different people's responsibilities, I encourage you to talk with each other and. Find out, uh, the answers to your questions. All right, thank you very much. Now. Let's move on to Ms. Rexburg. Avery Simkins, I've had a, a, a chance to visit with her about her platform, which is an excellent platform. Um, and she, and, uh. I've got to brag a little bit, Avery was one of my wife's second graders and she's. My wife is very proud of Avery at this point in time, so anyway, Avery, we'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you. So. Um, a little over a year ago, um, I was young, I was twenty years old. And I got married. I moved across the country at the end of my marriage and I. Was in an abusive marriage. I was listening to a podcast and from a famous actor. And he, um. Was telling how his relationship with his wife was so amazing. And how he was so proud of the person that she had become. That he was proud of the version of himself that she pulled out and that he would not be where she was without. And I remember watching this and falling to my closet for, for crying because this would never be. The reality of my relationship with my husband. Um, my name is Avery Simkins, Ms. Rexburg, and I survived an abusive marriage. This is the reason that I am competing in this pageant. Is to spread, um, awareness and to, um, share my platform, which is heal thy relationships. When you put it together, it spells healthy. So healthy relationships with your body, mind, and others. Today, I want to help all of you guys understand what a healthy relationship looks like. So you don't mistake love for abuse. So what is abuse? For me. Um, abuse was. Um, any variation, mine was never physical, but it was very emotional and psychological. Um, it starts with simple things like emotional manipulation. Um, isolation. My isolation looked like. Um, having to move across the country without getting to say goodbye to my parents. I was put on a phone call that he had scripted for me and was told that I couldn't vary from the script. And that I couldn't say bye. Um, abuse is also full of gaslighting, making you question your reality and what. Um, and being told things like you're too sensitive or you're not capable or you're crazy. I was told that I wasn't allowed to say the words, this hurt me. Or, um, you hurt me by these actions. And when I did bring them up in my relationship, he would call me bravery. So he would mix my name with the word crazy and call me bravery. I wasn't allowed to speak on his actions or things that had hurt me. The next thing is control. Abusers and manipulators love control, that is what they thrive in. And so having control is things that they say to you like, um. For me, it was, you look great, but why don't you try losing twenty pounds to fit into your wedding dress? I thought it was very nice and genuine that he cared about me. Um, eventually this turned into, why don't you lose twenty pounds before you can beat your hair down? So it drastically changed from the beginning of my relationship to the end of my marriage. Um, I also wasn't allowed to have. Normal foods, like I was on a super intense diet. That looked like me not being able to eat pickles, my favorite food. So he told me I had to, um. Work out for an hour and a half every day in order to earn one all, uh, slice of a pickle. And he'd come home and count them because of the control that he needed. And the relationship. So how do we see the warning signs? So there are some that are super simple, things like. Love bombing, things like pushing the relationship faster than it needs to be, pushing for commitment. Um, saying I love you too quickly. Um, disguising jealousy as protection. Things like, um, I don't want you to hang out with other people just because I love you so much and I want you. Um, disrespecting boundaries, boundaries are a huge thing for. Um, abusers and controllers because, um, they're not important to them because they do not care about you. They don't care about the boundaries that you have and they're willing to cross them and break them. Um, there is something that is called. Learned helplessness. A story that I heard was there are two sets of mice. And these mice, there is one group where when the mice did something good. They were fed a treat and when they did something bad, then they were zapped. The other group of mice were, when they did something bad, they would get zapped. And then when they did something good, they would also get zapped. It's called learned helplessness, where no matter what you do, you get punished. This is hard in abusive marriages, things that are hard to unlearn. Um, but. They are things that you are capable of unlearning and. Um, things that make all of it worth. Um, while, so, um, another thing that they do is monitoring and controlling. Um, for me, he would come home and check my phone to see if I'd talked to my family while he was away. I wasn't allowed to talk to my family. So how do we heal? From these. Bad things that happen to us, the trials that we have, um, and the abuse. So talking about it is a huge thing. When, um. We first, um, can understand what a unhealthy relation. we first can understand what a unhealthy relationship looks like and the way that we talk to ourselves with self doubt, blaming ourselves, confusion and the feeling of walking on eggshells. When in contrast, a healthy relationship looks like feeling safe, feeling seen, being allowed to disagree. So a healthy partner supports your feelings and your emotional and spiritual feelings. So I want to ask each of you guys, have you ever been in a relationship where you, there was something that you believed in, but a relationship made you question it? Is there something that that could have been different? This is a sign of the beginnings of abuse. So healing thy mind. It all starts with self-worth and it comes from within. It is something that we must work from the inside out. And it's like a muscle. It takes a long time, but it's repetition and being kind to ourselves. It often seems that self-esteem isn't about being perfect, but about loving yourself. So there's a couple of things that you can do to heal your mind, which number one is speak to yourself like someone that you love. There are things that I would tell myself. There are things that I would never say to my little sister. And majority of the things that I was telling myself in my relationship weren't true. So challenge yourself, talk and replace it with truth, with things like I am worthy and I am capable. So number three is setting boundaries and keeping them. Boundaries seem so overwhelming and so impossible to do, but I realized that boundaries are something that is where you are comfortable. It is drawing a line and saying, this is where I'm comfortable, but beyond that I'm not. And so I'm not going to cross this line. And it is actually very simple. Do things that make you proud of yourself, things like getting out of bed on time, drinking water, going on walks and finishing a task. I was told that I was too dumb for college, but I went on and got my, I started back in classes and I realized that I actually am smart and I actually am capable. And so that was a huge learning curve for me was learning that I actually am capable. Number five is know who you are without someone else telling you. I think it is so important for all of us to reflect right now on ourselves and what are the things that we know about ourselves? What are our beliefs and who are we? The way that we talk to ourselves is telling people how to treat us. It, people will treat us the way that we let them. And when we believe the things that we are telling ourselves that are negative, we allow this behavior. Healing your body is another big and important thing when it comes to healing. For this little quote is your body remembers what the mind tries to forget. My body was telling me months before I could even process that I was being abused. I tried to do my best in my marriage, but my health started feeling, I started getting really sick and I was almost bedridden every day in the last month of my marriage. I was physically ill. And that was something that was really hard for me to learn and get over and heal the relationship with my body and become the version of myself that I wanted today. How I got over this was things like going to therapy, learning how to love myself and how to love my body, especially after the manipulation and being told that I wasn't good enough. The last thing is having a good support system. I had my grandma. For some reason, she was the only one that my ex-husband allowed me to talk to. And so I would go to her house once a week and we'd make meals. And she didn't know it, but she was my lifeline. She was the one, she was the goodness that I was holding on to in my life and I wasn't allowed to talk to my family other than her. And so think about the relationships that you have in your life. It is never a situation where you can't be kind, that you can't share, that it is okay to be broken, but that it is better to be kind. So how do we help the people who are in these situations? It's okay to be vulnerable around people. It's okay that you can do hard things. And the last quote is abuse is a part of your story, but it is not part of your identity. This is a quote that helped me through very hard times. And so in closing, I just want to say that your story, my story is one of survival, but yours doesn't have to be because you can help other people in situations like mine and you can spread awareness for what is okay and what is not okay in relationships. And that if you are in a similar situation to me, that you can get through it and you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's a good message. I like the heal thy. And then it says healthy. I think that's a kind of a clever way to, to lead into that. So thank you very much. Ms. Rexburg, Avery Simkins, and hopefully the future Ms. Idaho, right?
Hopefully.
Yeah, all right. Good deal. And we'd like to recognize her family here with her, mom and dad and friend, I guess. Right. Okay. So glad to have you here with us tonight. Appreciate that. All right, let's move on to item number six on our agenda, which is a public hearing. That's for a surplus of public property with intent to sell as Pareto State Statute fifty dash fourteen oh two. This is a property located at one ninety-five East First South, which is the old pump house property that the city has been using just for a shop, basically for a lot of time. I guess we don't need to say anything more than that, right Keith, about it?
Questions?
Yeah, unless there's any questions. This, this is a public hearing, so you know, there, there could be, if there are any questions or anything about that, we, we can certainly answer that. Or actually probably better to, to ask if there's any questions about it before we go into the public hearing. So does anybody have any questions about this particular property? Any? From council? Okay. All right. So the public hearing is designed to take public input about the item in question. And so this property located at one ninety-five East First South. We would, going into a public hearing, what we'll do is ask for any, yeah, that property right there. There you go. If there's anyone that has anything in favor of this item, we'd ask you to come up and state your name and address and testify. And then we will call for anyone in the neutral position about this proposal. And then after that, we'll ask if there's anyone opposed to this particular proposal. So with that in mind, we'll go ahead and declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone that would like to testify in favor of this particular item on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, is there anyone who would like to testify in the neutral position? And if there's no, no neutral testifiers, is there anyone that would like to testify against this item on the agenda? All right, seeing or hearing none, we declare this public hearing closed. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to declare this property as a surplus to be sold.
Mr. Mayor, I shall move that we surplus the property at one ninety-five East First South.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and declare that as surplus property and move forward with that. Yes.
And it's just, it's basically the statute.
Okay, so that's this one. This one you've got in my file folder. Okay. All right, while she's pulling that up, I can, I can talk about it a little bit. It's resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh four, which is a resolution declaring this actual property as surplus property. So we need to, to move, to do an action item on this or is that part of the surplus? So we don't need to do a separate action item? Okay, that's what I was thinking.
You've basically done everything.
Okay. All right. So we've got that here. All right. Thank you. Okay, item number seven, public, is also a public hearing. This is a kind of always an awkward situation because it's giving ourselves basically a raise, which is how it works in Idaho. Public officials have to raise their, the wages and salaries occasionally. And so what we have done is we, we haven't done any kind of increases other than just what we would call cost of living. We've taken the cost of living for the last two years and added those to the council and mayor salaries. So this is also is a public hearing. So if we will go ahead and follow the same format, we will declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone who would like to testify in? Oh, and I, I guess I could before we totally open it, the cost of living has been about, I'm not sure the exact amount, but it's approximately two and a half percent over the last two years. So for the two years, it would be about a five percent increase. And that doesn't go into effect until January first of twenty twenty-six. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to testify in favor of this particular item on the agenda? Hearing none, is there anyone who'd like to testify in the neutral position? And if there is none there, is there anyone who'd like to testify against this particular item? Anyone online that has their hand up? No? All right. And hearing none, I will declare this public hearing closed and I would entertain a motion to move forward on ordinance number thirteen thirty-one.
Mr. Mayor, just a moment. Just saw the public will know we can only do this on the election year.
Right.
Every other year. So, so those of us who won't be here in January, we, we won't see the benefit of it since January of this coming year.
That's correct. Thank you. That's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make the motion that we approve ordinance number thirteen thirty-one and consider it first read.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions?
Mayor, I just have
Yes.
Just a few comments, just for the kind of public to understand. I did research this quite a bit through other cities and tried to look at what they do. Most cities do it every year. They just make a natural step up and they have it right in their ordinance. They do it each year. We do it every other year, just looking at it. Some, we've done a lot of times not bolted in. So we definitely look at this, but I did research out to a lot of other cities throughout Idaho. It varies over the board, some of it, but comparing us to cities our size seems like this is a thing that we should do and to keep up so we don't get way, way behind.
Not too far.
I know a lot of the city councils, we're still way down. So I think it's still is a good thing that we're doing for the citizens and look at this. We're not trying to, trying to put a lot of money in our books. This is pennies compared to what we, the time and stuff we put in. So just a comment.
All right, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We will consider that first read. All right, moving on to item number eight, the staff reports. We will first start out with our finance report with our CFO, Mr. Matt Nielsen. Their financial reports.
Get this on. There you go.
Good evening.
So before I jump into the, the finance reports, I just want to just make sure that we clarify our work meeting for the budget meeting. And then also thank you for everyone coming to many, many meetings over the last two, three weeks for budget. We, we basically reviewed every line item and every fund in the city and all of those different meetings.
Hey Matt, just can I interrupt you for one moment? And on that note, I would say, and this is probably my fault for not giving you enough advance notice, but from now on, those of you who are retiring, I don't know which one of you that will be exactly, but you won't have to worry about it. But for those who are continuing on, let's do whatever we can for those two middle weeks of May to try to schedule around those weeks with vacations and stuff so that we can have everybody, you know, for our budget meetings, just because, you know, it's, it's a lot better to be there. So anyway, just a note. Okay.
Yeah. So I had a question, just as I look at the budget prep calendar, kind of our next big thing is the council budget work meeting. And you know, for the public, that's really the best meeting to come to because it, we, we get into quite a few details about what's changing in the budget. We talk about big capital projects. We talk about personnel, et cetera, et cetera. And so as far as that work meeting goes, I think right now we have it on the schedule at four P M. We don't have to go that early if you don't want to. I think we did that last year and, and I think we utilized a lot of that time. And so it's totally up to you guys, but so that's June fourth.
June fourth.
Next council meeting.
Oh, that'd be the next meeting. Yeah, that's right.
Two weeks. I just want to set that time, if you will. Then we can get it on the agenda.
I might have to zoom in. I supposed to be at the board meetings in Boise that night. I'm still trying to get away from that, but it is a meeting that our chief is going to possibly be at, be put on that board. So I'll, I'll work with the mayor on that.
Okay. So you guys want to do the four? Are we good with that?
We're gonna call that budget work, budget work meeting?
I think four thirty even, but I think two hours. I think we need two hours, but I think four thirty would work.
I mean, I think four thirty would be.
Four thirty, okay. All right, let's do that.
Okay, we'll, Deb, if you'll make that note on the agenda, we'll plan on that. Okay, so for these, these reports, I'll go pretty quick here. So this first one is just the, the investment balance. You know, something that I'll mention on this is as we've looked at the capital improvement plans, water and sewer are very substantial over the next two years. And so Scott and I have met, our controller, we've looked at particularly these, these bonds with TV, or sorry, these investments with T V I and Morton. And what we're going to be doing is we're going to be moving really all of the water and sewer investments into the LGIP over the next two years. Because we've just have to have that cash available because of the substantial amount of capital. Which we don't feel like it's too bad because the LGIP is actually still making like four point three percent. And so as long as the market stays where it is, it's still a really good place to have that money and it's liquid for those projects. And so that's probably the, the biggest thing that I would say about the investments. If we really get to those projects, it's, you know, you're going to see a pretty substantial drop in the next eighteen months. I would suspect it will probably drop ten million dollars or more if we really do these projects. So.
Can I just throw in a, just for the public who is here, sometimes you'll hear a lot of noise from legislators and so on about cities and how they're overtaxing people because they've got big numbers sitting there in their, in their savings accounts and things. But you know, you've got thirty million dollars and then you decide to do a sewer plant upgrade and that there goes twelve million dollars of it out the door just like that. So we try to save so that we've got the money to be able to do these projects when they need to be done without having to pass a bond to be, to have to tax people more. So we feel like it's prudent to, to go that way and try to save money rather than asking for tax increases with bonds all the time because, and it's tough to get your stuff done that you need to have done. So that's, that's why we have some fairly large amounts in our savings, but it can, it disappears quite rapidly when we start doing projects.
Yeah, and I, and just so you guys know, I, I feel like we can pay with the reserves, all the projects are about twenty twenty-six. But by twenty twenty-seven, you're going to have to have either a bond or judicial confirmation. I mean, just, just one of the one line items we're looking at at wastewater is the seven million dollar project in twenty twenty-seven. And so, so yeah, and, and just so you know, this is our last year on the bond from twenty-ten for wastewater. So you're gonna pay that off in about two months. It'll be done, so.
It's good. Always good to get them paid off.
Yeah, um, okay, Deb, you gotta help me out. Sorry, I'm you wanna pull that other one up real quick? Okay, and now this other one, as she pulls it up, I'll just kind of hit it quick. So really, this report is through um last month of April, so we're we really should be sitting at about fifty eight percent spent. And so as you guys review each of those different funds, as I looked at it, the general fund is about fifty five percent. So I think that's that's uh trending pretty decent. Um, you know, emergency services is a little high. We had discussed that, and we've discussed that in the budget meeting with them, and and we've been able to kind of trim that forecast down quite a bit as I've worked with with management over there. And then um other than that, I think that's that's probably about all that I'll bring up unless you have any additional questions. It's a lot of data. So. Okay.
Any questions? Many one? All right.
All right, should I hit the next item?
Yes, let's go ahead.
Okay, so Scott, do you wanna come up on this one and help me out? So Scott Johnson's gonna come up. So. One of the things that uh you guys know that that we've been doing fireworks in the community for several years uh at three different locations. Um, as we go forward in planning this year, uh, I think the plan is to do it at two locations. And we we believe we'll have kind of the same sponsors that will help pay for that. And then we're really looking out to next year. And so that's what this discussion is about.
Can I ask you really quick which two locations for this year then? Which one are we dropping?
Rexburg Rapids and Teton Lake, so we'll keep. And we won't do the middle school.
Okay.
So part of that is just the cost coming back with tariffs and other things. Unfortunately, fireworks really are hit hard, unlike some of the other things, but yeah, so.
Chinese.
So. You know, I'll go through. Do you wanna kind of hit some highlights? If you want to just go right through it?
Yeah, no, so I'm looking at next year. Um, the two hundred fiftieth uh celebration of our country. Um, we've had a number of community partners who have asked if we're gonna be doing something different. Uh, there were some ideas thrown out, and so one of those uh that the mayor asked me to kind of just look at and work through. Um, so I've been doing the fireworks since COVID. Uh, that's been my department. So he just said, hey, run with this. Um, so uh, we started talking about it, kind of a stadium of fire, if you will, like uh down at uh Provo that they have. Um, we won't be calling it that. We don't know what we'll call it just yet, but um, the thought was to do something a little bit larger, obviously, for the two hundred fiftieth anniversary. Um, right now, the thought is that we would have something at the high school stadium. Uh, we have spoken with them, and they're in favor, uh, generally speaking, as we start to kind of go down this road, we'll uh be able to flush out a few more things, but um, the thought is uh that we would be able to have a a large event, uh, bring in uh a performer, um, have potentially two different shows, a drone show as well as a firework show. Um, and uh really just kind of celebrate that two hundred and fiftieth in a way that we haven't done before. Um, so some of the things that we looked at, some of the concerns, um, obviously, as well, are people gonna be able to see the fireworks even if they don't come to this? The answer is yes. Um, in fact, the reason we did look at the high school is because from almost anywhere in the city, you can actually see those. So even those who decide not to attend, decide to stay home, they'll be able to see those fireworks. Uh, one location for that year will actually make the the actual fireworks larger, um, so we'll have a longer show during that period. Um, Matt can walk you through some of the finances, but ultimately what we're kind of looking at is um, about a four to five hour event uh with vendors, food vendors, um, the entertainment, um, and then the drone show and the fireworks. Um, so we're looking at an average ticket price right now of about forty dollars. Uh, get you a wristband, lets you get into the stadium and out to go to the vendors, uh, then be able to come back in and experience those things. Um, we are working with a number of sponsors. Um, he does have listed, you know, some potential donors. I want you to know that there's more than that that we're working with uh currently. Um, and so the the goal is that we can actually get sponsors to cover uh a lot of those these costs. Um, and as if we can, and Matt will walk you through these, um, we would like to be able to split proceeds with the county and the city, uh, cities portion going to the tabernacle. County is actually going to their new fairgrounds. Um, and so that's kind of what we're looking at there. But I'll let Matt walk you through the finances, so.
Yeah, um, and so and we we discussed this a little in the under the mayor's department meeting. Um, so we did have to update the numbers just a little bit as we have got more information, but really, we're we're hoping to have a, we're we're looking to set a revenue budget of about two hundred forty five thousand and then an expense of about two sixty. So if you think about that, that's a a net subsidy of fifteen thousand by the city. But the reality is, we feel like if we get the right artists, we can get a substantial higher number on the revenues side of things, which would then be any profit that would be split, as Scott mentioned. And my thought was, we would just uh do a budget adjustment for any profit that comes in and then split that accordingly once it's determined, you know, which projects that would help fund. And so
So just just to clarify, uh, fifteen thousand dollar subsidy, but we're hoping to raise a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so I'll throw, I'm gonna throw you through some scenarios here.
Okay.
So let me let me show you just the expenses real quick. Um, I mean, the biggest one is to bring a singer in, like a a good artist that's actually going to attract people. Scott and I have been in way too many meetings lately about how much artists cost on another project. But I mean, you you really to get anyone that you would recognize, it it's pretty much six figures and up. And uh we we have reached out to one artist that we believe would be very successful. Um, and we've had, we've been able to do that actually with the help of the contract uh person up at the university. They've allowed us to use his services for that. And uh, you know, they're coming back to us and saying that that particular artist would be between one seventy five to two hundred roughly, and they are available on that date. Uh, just to give you an idea. Uh, drone show would be about twenty thousand, fireworks twenty thousand, and then we've thrown in about forty thousand for advertising, sales tax, and other things. Um, so if you look at the scenarios, let's say that we sold thirty five hundred tickets at an average of forty dollars. Then you can see we bring in about a hundred and forty. We feel very confident that we'll probably bring in um six figures in donations, but if you only brought in sixty thousand, you can see that, you know, the city would actually be subsidizing that that event, probably sixty grand. But if you were to sell sixty five hundred tickets, which means everybody has a seat, right? In that venue, um, then you're looking at a a total projected profit of about three hundred and seventy thousand. And if you were to sell ninety five hundred tickets, which means that you're selling standing in the middle of the field, um, then you could potentially bring in over half a million dollars. And so pretty wide range. Um, we're pretty optimistic that that it's not gonna lose money if you get the right artist. I mean, that's the question.
Yeah, we have a question.
Just can you help me understand the less expense? Why there's not a difference between the revenue and the projected pro proceeds line on those last two columns? I'm just not understanding.
So this section here?
Yeah, those two words, so three seventy, and then it says less expense, and then it still says three seventy.
Oh, two sixties from above.
Yeah, if you sell sixty five hundred tickets, you'd make.
Yeah, um. That is a good question.
And the next one, it's the same.
Yeah, I think we did the math wrong, didn't we, guys?
Wait. Donations.
Somebody do the math.
You're saying the two sixty is the same on all of them?
Well, you're not, you're not excluding the expense from it.
Let's do the math.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah. That's my bad.
So I
So it'd be more like one ten.
Ten some over her.
Yeah.
There, there, so I saw that face. I just want you to know that we've been, like Matt said, in way too many meetings. We originally were looking at like a medium that everybody knows, won't mention any names, but that booking is seven hundred and fifty thousand per one show. That just gives you an idea of how crazy it is. Yeah. So, yeah, it's amazing.
Okay, I got you the right numbers. I'm sorry about that. We dragged that down and cut and did it wrong. So the sixty five hundred is a is a hundred and ten thousand profit. And then this, the ninety five hundred is two eighty. So it gives you a little better perspective. Sorry about that. Um, and then obviously, we've also kind of predicted some different donated numbers of that. So. Um, I'll fix that for sure. So so if we look at the, how do I get back to the budget? Well, any questions on this before I jump out of this?
Matt, one thing I don't think we figured on this, I mean, we're looking at what's it costing, but we haven't figured nothing on the the security or and you bring in sixty five hundred or ninety five hundred people, you're gonna have a huge expense. Are we just gonna hit the police department, the fire department budget? Or are we gonna add in something for security, something, be able to move that out and in and and the safety there?
Uh, so I think part of that, and again, we don't have great numbers. Yeah, but part of that was under just the other. If you see that, et cetera, we anticipated some of that being there, but it may be higher than that, to your point, so. We put, we set aside forty thousand.
Well, you may, and this is just brainstorming ideas, but you know, maybe uh you let their families in for free if they volunteer to do security that night or something.
Well, I I would anticipate it similar to the airshow. I mean, think about the airshow. It brings in ten thousand people. And so I don't I don't know why we would treat it differently.
Yeah, that's true. They do a really good job with that.
And they will, but it's definitely gonna cost.
We agree.
But it, one thing that will help is we're not gonna serve alcohol.
That will be better.
Yeah. Yeah, there's
Okay, so let me just show you the budget adjustment. Uh, so this budget adjustment would be this year. Um, in order to really be able to promote this and take out this to potential donors, you really need to book the talent in advance. Um, and so the request is a hundred and ninety five thousand, uh, a hundred thousand coming from general fund contingency that leave about thirty three five left, which is not concerning to me because we're we're gonna close that budget out within probably the next thirty, forty days and not have adjustments. And then the uh we would have to dip into the the carryover about ninety five thousand. So you're looking at a hundred and ninety five thousand is the budget request.
Another question that uh trying to think if we have talked about this or not, but if we're gonna split the proceeds with the county, uh, I mean, they're helping us to pay for the fireworks, right? But are 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 they kicking in anything else on that on the front end?
Their commitments right now.
So fifteen is their commitment, but as we go forward, they've said that they're willing to look at this.
Okay.
So uh, the hospital is also willing to look. That's part of
Yeah.
County and some others, so.
Okay.
And then we're, we've already been in conversations with the the same person that's contributed for what, five years now?
Yeah.
Toyota and Stones and
Did you have a question?
Yeah, so I understood. So you're saying ours, we would be paying one ninety five, and the county would be paying fifteen, and we're gonna split it fifty fifty?
No, no, no. We're we're saying that we would book the artists at a hundred and ninety five. But then as we sell the tickets, that revenue is gonna come back to us, right? And if we make a profit, then yes, we would split the profits. But they would donate fifteen thousand. We would bill them fifteen thousand dollars as part of that revenue.
Our subsidy is fifteen and their subsidy is fifteen.
You're saying if we make it all back?
If we make it back.
But but who but who eats the cost if we don't? We eat the cost. Okay, I was just checking.
That's, and we're still working on that with them.
Yeah, I was gonna say that 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 seems like the risk gotta be equally shared as well.
So it's not a complete.
Yeah, and and that could be part of the conversation, right? I mean, we maybe we do less of a percent that goes to them and more to the tabernacle. I don't know. Um, but yeah, at this point, we would run it through our budget, and we would run all that revenue through our budget. And then the idea would be to split any of the profits or proceeds at that point with whatever we agree to.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, there probably should be some consideration for, you know, the amount of risk involved, that kind of thing.
And work.
And the work, yeah, and and the amount of work too. Yeah.
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 Definitely.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
So Matt, and I and
Question.
And uh Scott, the the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the, you know, celebration of the country, I'm assuming that there are other communities will also be having big celebrations. You, do you have any sense at all what Idaho Falls is? I mean, you know, I'd hate to have two huge big events on the same night, and somebody have despite whether I can go here or there or what.
Yeah, that's something we failed to mention to you.
Yeah.
We've looked at that, so we're actually looking at doing ours on Friday night, the third, and the reason is the chamber actually said, hey, you're not gonna get vendors past two o'clock in the afternoon on the fourth because they wanna be with their families. Right? So that was part of it. The other part was, hey, we don't wanna compete necessarily with what's happening in Idaho Falls. And so if we have it on Friday, the third, then people can come to that. They can go to the parade in the morning. They can be done, choose to go do whatever else they want. So yes, that is.
So this will be the night, the parade will be on the fourth?
Fourth, correct.
And this will be on the third?
Uh huh.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And is it a Friday night?
It is.
Oh, that's even better.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good night. Anything, yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I really appreciate all the work and things, and I'm sorry. I think I'm probably just a wet sandwich, but I have gotten so many comments from residents about how much they love having the fireworks in those multiple locations and having it free of cost so that families can just be on the grass right by the fireworks. So I'm, I know you said you can see it from anywhere, but it's not quite the same. So I guess I feel pretty sad about that because I I think that was something unique for Rexburg that you got to you got to um be there free of cost, and it didn't make this huge parking, you know, or or traffic jam, um, so you could get in and out. And then I guess I just disagree that tax dollars should go to pay an artist that much money. That's just something I I disagree with, and and we're counting on donations that we haven't seen, and I have seen other times, even in my time on the council, when we haven't gotten the donations that we were planning on. We're also gambling that we're gonna get that many people to buy tickets. There's too many gambles with the tax dollars for me. And we said that we need to tighten our belts on things, and then we're gonna do a budget adjustment for almost two hundred thousand dollars. Like, I just, I disagree with that. I'm sorry. So.
Yeah, that's great. So I'll address a couple of the things first. So when I first proposed three locations, I was laughed at. So it's funny that now everybody likes them. So and
Great idea.
Well, well, we thought so, but nobody liked it at the beginning. Now they're talking.
I think they warmed up to it pretty fast after one try.
So this isn't to replace that. I mean, it will go back. This is just one year. This is a one time thing. So what we've seen though is we don't see that many people, believe it or not, going to the actual locations. Um, I've driven around every time we've had it, and there's, you know, it's, there's a few, but it's definitely not heavily. Um.
Well, I go to the golf course every year, and the parking lot's full, so.
They're, yeah, they're out there golfing still. No, I'm just so, yeah, we haven't, I mean, we really haven't seen a huge amount of people at those locations, I guess is what we're saying. Most people do stand.
It's good because you can see it.
Yeah.
A lot of different places.
Location, yeah. But it is one of the reasons that we actually looked. Um, you know, the university talked to us about their stadium. One of the reasons we did look at the high school is because it is more visible, right, from anywhere that you're at. So we do appreciate that, and we recognize that. And again, this is one year. It's not meant to replace that going forward, um, just this one year. Um, as far as your uh the other comments about yeah, we we understand that. That's uh, there's definitely a risk in all these things that we do. Um, as we kind of look at, you know, what do we provide for our community and um some
And I guess we we I guess we should point out too that if if we don't, if we can't get the uh, you know, some pretty solid sponsors and things like that, we can always say, you know, pull the plug on it and and
Yeah, and that's actually what we're doing, the budget adjustment this year. Um, so it gives us enough time to find talent, book them, um, see if we can get the sponsors and those things. So if we can't do that, then it'll be business as usual, so. Two locations instead of three, though.
We can't, we have no control over
Yeah.
The tariffs.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, then this is an action item, so I would uh at this time uh entertain moving forward with uh this budget adjustment for stadium two fifty event. Is there such a motion?
Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion that we support the, we approve the budget adjustment for the us.
Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion that we support the, we approve the budget adjustment for the, us. For the stadium two fifty event.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh, is there any further discussion or comments before we vote?
Is, is there a reason we have to do this tonight? I mean, the question is, I, I'm, I'm, my concern is. How, what? I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem taking a little bit of risk if I knew what we were. Really what the risk was, if you know what I mean. Without all the information, it's hard to know what. If, if, if you're gonna tell me that you're gonna get somebody like. I don't know. Uh, in our area like Donny Osmond or someone like that. I'd take the risk every day, cause I think we'd get, I think we'd get people to come. But if it was uh, you know, somebody else, I don't know who it would be. I date myself, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm just trying to think it off the top of my head, an artist. That, that would attract the most people in our, in our particular areas. Yeah, whatever. Uh, so, so I guess my quick question is, is there, is there a need? Can, can we mull this over a little bit for a week or two? To kinda, and maybe, maybe talk a little bit.
Absolutely.
Little bit more offline or something?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and as we said before, really the, the only rush is just trying to make sure that you actually can get talent. That weekend is tough, right? There's a lot of people that are actually out there trying to get them for those weekends, so. The reason for doing it now is just that, so that we have.
Have there been some initial contacts made?
Yes.
That, that, so there is a possibility?
Yep. And, and one of the challenges we face is some of the sponsors are like, well, who are you bringing? Well, we don't know until we can actually get them anyway. So there's a little bit of a chicken and egg scenario. Um, I will tell you, Matt and I won't be disappointed not going to any more of these meetings about artists, right? So, it's not like, we just feel like this is, this was an idea again that came from really um, our community partners. Um, and the mayor just asked me to kind of lead this and head it up and so.
Well, and I.
I'm not here to.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. I think it would be a great community event. I think it would be something we could bring people together in.
Do you think, uh, do, would you feel more comfortable, I mean, if we have. Some kind of a, I guess you'd say an out clause or a, you know, like if, if we can't get. X number of sponsors or whatever by certain date that, that, you know, then we say, hey, we pull a plug on it and we just go back to business as usual.
There's a great chance we can't even find talent. And so it may not happen anyway. Like, I mean, there's just a lot of, a lot of those variables that.
Well, that's my question. This, this is, this adjustment is to retain an artist, right? If we don't get the sponsorship, if we don't sell tickets, if it's not looking positive, is that refundable?
Yeah, so you can run into the contract that if we cannot get the funding, then that, we just cancel. They usually give you. Up till a certain amount of time before the performance. So those are things that can all be written in and.
Okay. Thoughts? Anyone else thoughts? We, we have the motion in a second.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
If we, if we, I don't know, if this motion, we've already, we already have the motion. If it fails and we talk about it again, when will we get, will we have more information at the next council meeting or how will that be conveyed to us?
Uh, yeah, hopefully. So just, you know, I mean, we're, we're constantly meeting on artists. We're also constantly meeting with. People that we're looking to have sponsor. Um, and I met with two this last week. Uh, we met with three the week before, uh, that all have an interest, so. Yeah, I mean, every week we, we'll get a little bit closer for sure, so.
So, and I, I think we can just tell you who this artist, so we, we were, they reached out to us with the available artists. It's Russell Dickerson, he's a country singer. And he is available on July third, and he is the one that would be kind of one seventy-five to two hundred range.
Russell Dickerson.
Have people heard of him?
For music, I guess do, uh, I'm.
He's not Taylor Swift, how's that?
But we also don't have, we don't have the million dollars for Taylor.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is actually three million.
Colin?
Uh, Mister Mayor, I think it's a good idea. I'm just a little nervous about. Jumping right into this and proving up, but if we can have some loopholes and some, be able to lock in that we can get out, if we get, can't get the sponsor. I think that we could possibly move forward on it, but I am nervous of jumping in at two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a risk for sure and uh. But I, I do think, um. I think it'll work out. I think it'll be, it'll build excitement, you know, as is, they start talking more and more about the two-hundred-and-fifty anniversary of our country and. And the things that we're gonna be doing. Um, but with that, I think it, I think it is important for us to have some. Some uh. Some ways to be able to pull the plug if we, if we see that, hey, we're not getting the sponsorships, we're not getting. You know, we're not getting the ticket sales or whatever, uh, by a certain date and we just pull the plug and we just go back to. You know, what we've done before.
Can, can we have that in the motion, with the motion, kind of set up idea?
Yeah.
Mister Mayor, what, at what point would it be appropriate to uh, suggest that we, or move that we table this to the next meeting? After the vote?
No, that must supersede.
We already have.
No, we, we could just uh, we could just, you could just move to table it, right? Well, we have a motion in a second, so. Yeah, that, that's right. A table motion supersedes the motion on the, on the.
Can I draw my motion? Make another motion, we table this to the next meeting?
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, so I will draw my motion of supporting, of going forward with it right now and table it until next meeting. Till we get more information.
All right.
I would second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table this item until the next meeting, till we have a little bit more information. Uh, is there any questions or discussion about that? Yes.
Yes, I would like to know, um, you say community partners, but. I'd like to know how they're all participating to help with the cost, because to me, it doesn't really seem fair that we're the ones. Footing the entire bill. If you're claiming that they came to you and asked for it, why aren't they. Putting monetary, you know, not putting money into it. So, so that's what I'd like to know too, and with the county. Um, I think we need a lot more details and a lot more structure. Cause it, these are tax dollars, it matters.
So, yeah, we're not, they did, and that actually came to the mayor. I, I'm the. Go get him guy, but, um, the Chamber of Commerce was actually the first two approaches. Uh, the county, actually, then said, hey, we're gonna do something special, right? They have those conversations. So yes, we can definitely say, hey, you know, where are you guys willing to do what's happening? Uh, the chamber is more than willing to help, um, especially on the vendor side, those types of things, they've said. Um, we'll see what they can do financially. The county has said, hey, we'll up ours, but they also said, hey, if we need more, let's talk. So a lot of it is just really narrowing down the artist, and that's where it's difficult, you know, I mean. That's where it becomes a challenge. We don't even know what to go and ask them for just yet, until we know who's coming, how much it's gonna cost. Those types of things. So there's a little bit of, again, chicken and egg.
Well, now that we've got kind of a budget put together, I think that'll help us to be able to uh, approach some of those people and get a little more structure like. Uh, Councilmember Johnson suggesting.
We would be glad to do.
Yeah. Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second to table this item until the next council meeting. Is there any further questions or discussion?
I've just got a quick question. Is this two weeks gonna be adequate for us to get some of those answers?
So, that's a great question.
But not so long that we're gonna lose, I mean, we're also fishing here, right? Got somebody.
I don't, I don't think it'll be too long, but um, it's a good time right now. That's why we're approaching everybody, cause they're going through budget cycles just like we are. Um, in a lot of ways, so.
After, after the next meeting then.
It'll actually be three weeks from, three weeks from now that we.
No, it's two weeks.
Two weeks and then three weeks. And then I guess my other question, um, if I can remember it now. Is, um. I just escaped, I think, but it actually seemed like it was a smart question. Well, you can, that's smart.
You know what? You can ask it. As soon as, as soon as you don't try to think of it, you'll think of it and you're welcome to ask it again.
Thank you, our students. Somebody hand me a post-it note next time.
As, cause it, it sounds like our, our, the, the tenor is to table this anyway, so we do have a motion to table and a second. Any further comments? A question? Oh yeah, there you go.
Do you have any idea what the industry standard is for how early or how. Long before the event could we cancel and get a refund? Any clue?
So it's really, it's, it's really interesting. We've been working directly with BYU Idaho. Um, on an, on the other concert that they've agreed to let us have. So that's where we've learned a ton going through this. Each agent and each artist is a little bit different, but going into the fourth of July, we were just counseled. You better make sure you got them plenty of time ahead. So that's really kind of what we're trying to do is just balance all that, so. Others, we reach out, especially for the other concerts we're looking at, and they've just said. Here's our availability, doing it these dates work, right, those types of things. So it's a little bit different than what we're doing, but.
Okay, all right, anything else? Hearing none? All in favor of tabling? Any opposed? Right, we will table this item until the next council meeting. Thank you, appreciate that information. All right, we'll move on to item number eight B, which is our public works. Items with uh, Mister Keith Davidson. Item number one is a bid approval of wastewater repairs. Twenty twenty, for this year, actually.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so each year as we go through and TV our lines, we find areas that need to be repaired on those lines. And so, uh, we went out to bid and as you can see, we had three different bidders on it. Uh, Vanguard was the low bid. On this one, they've done the repairs for us in the past. They've been a low bidder, so we feel good about um, awarding them. Uh, the contract at the two-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions about this before we move forward on it? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to uh, approve this particular bid.
I'll make that motion, approve this bid for Vanguard. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for the amount shown, right? Um, all right, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Reiser. Any further questions?
Just a question, those, those vary so widely. Have you got any concern with the, with the quality and that we're?
We've used Vanguard in the, in the past on.
They've typically been lower, um, yeah.
There's almost two hundred thousand dollars difference, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars difference.
It's me, these guys are busy and if you wanna pay them that much to.
Yeah, I guess, there's lots of different reasons why you see a discrepancy. Sometimes it's how they view it, sometimes it's how busy they are. So lots of different variables that come into play. In some regards, these are actually close than other bids I've seen before in the past, but.
And if Vanguard was a unknown company that had never worked yet, probably would be a little more concerning. But we've used them a lot before and they, they usually are quite a bit lower. But it, don't they kind of specialize in this kind of stuff a little bit more?
Um, yeah, I think they, they do a lot of these kind of smaller. Yeah, projects, cause these are several projects throughout the city where we've got locations.
And it, it seems like they've done pretty, pretty darn good work for us in the past, it seems like, if I remember.
Yeah, yeah, we've been pleased with the work that.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of this bid approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead with that bid item. Item number two is a budget adjustment for purchase of water rights.
Yeah, and so, so we have an opportunity to uh, purchase some water rights. Um, and so we need to look at doing a budget adjustment. Um, and so with these water rights, we'll, we'll get these funds back as developers come in. Um, and this just helps expedite when we have developers coming in and they need to get, have water rights. Uh, to offset their development. Um, we can already have these in-house and then they'll just through development fees, they'll. We'll get this money back. Um, and so we're seeking to make that adjustment for seven hundred and thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. It's basically fifty acres. Equivalent of, of water rights that, that we'd be picking up.
All right. Yeah, questions?
Keith, I wouldn't have a clue if, if this is a good deal or if it's a, is this normal, what it costs?
Yeah, I mean, this is basically, I mean, we're working through. Roger Warner and these are.
The cost per share is thirteen thousand or something like that, isn't it?
Well, it's not shares, right? So it's actually uh, groundwater rights that are up on the, on the bench.
Okay.
And so, so that's what we're picking up is, it was that. It's based on the Jensen property up there by the temple. So we're just picking up some of those water rights off of that property up there.
Which I know we need more water always.
Yeah, I mean, I think this just helps as, as development occurs. I mean, we're still like large developments, we'd still encourage them to go. Find water rights, but a lot of the smaller ones, for them to pick up a, a small proportionate share would be very difficult. It's a lot easier for us to pick up a bunch of the shares and then. Um, basically to have them purchase into that.
So this is upfront money and then, and then we get it back as the development occurs?
I mean, so there's a lot of things we do where we front the costs, like when we purchase water meters, front that cost and then we get it back.
Yeah, okay. Any further questions?
So this does, it comes back to those impact fees that are part of building permits and those types of things?
Uh, so, yeah, so we'll, when we look at those capacity fees, so like to separate impact from capacity.
Okay.
But, but those would be things that, yeah, that we'd be looking at to say, here's, your development's coming in. You need to bring this water rights efficient because of the irrigation side, cause up on the hill, they can't use canal water, obviously. Cause there's no irrigation canals up there for them to attach to. Um, and so this would allow for them to just come in. Pay the city back or kind of us getting that front loading, if you will, our water rights.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
This, this comes from the water department's capital?
Uh, yeah, yep.
Yeah, the water reserve, which we're glad we have. All right, any further questions? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve this budget adjustment.
Mister Mayor, I move that we approve this uh, budget adjustment for the purchase of fifty acres of water rights.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any further questions? Having, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move forward with this purchase. Thank you. All right, item number three is approval of a architect for a water shop construction.
Yeah, so we've, uh, we had uh, four different architects submit, um, their proposals. Uh, for us, for the, the water department building. Um, and we went through those and the committee. Uh, selection was to work with Method Studios on that, so we are seeking council approval. Uh, to enter into negotiations with Method Studios uh, for a contract to do that work.
Right, any questions about this item from anyone?
Have we worked with them in the past?
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, we have representatives from Method Studios here and they have an office here in Rexburg and we have worked with them several times. They've done an excellent job for us. So, uh, if there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve uh, the architect for the water shop design. Is there such a motion?
Mister Mayor, I move that we. Approve Method Studios as the architect for the water shop.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and put those guys to work. Thank you, appreciate your help. All right, thank you Keith. Any other questions for Keith or?
I got a question for.
Oh, oh boy, we don't wanna let you off that easy.
What's up with the, not being gone for a couple weeks in there, so what's up with the lights on Trejo?
On Trejo, that's, that's a good question. I'd love to have that operational. Uh, so what we ran into is. The connection uh, with the railroad company. Um, and so that way the lights would be connected, so when the, the train was coming by, it would take the lights and preempt. It's a preempt connection that just makes the light go red for that maneuver. State law says if there's a green light and the railroad is flashing. You have to stop for the railroad. The railroad trumps that, but we've felt like safety concerns that we would just bag it, bag. You have to stop for the railroad. The railroad trumps that, but we felt like safety concerns that we would just bag it, bag the heads for now. And leave it.
Bag it, not just bag.
Yeah, 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 not that way. It's a good clarification there. Uh, is uh, so we just, basically it treats it. Like normal, when, when the heads are bagged means that there's not a signal there, basically. Um, and so it's about thirty days is what they were telling me to hopefully get that preempt. Uh, with the road, so we can get that installed and then we'll light that back up. And so, so that's kind of where we're at.
And how about my, my light at McDonald's on University and Yellowstone?
That, that's never been a problem.
It's, I don't know what you're talking about, no. Is it still?
I think that one has a Councilmember Walker sensor on it.
It must be. We'll have to see, cause that, that's one that there's lots of uh repairs and I'm wondering if maybe we gotta pull a whole new wire. Cause I know they went up and fixed the cameras on that. So if it's still doing it, someone else was telling me it was fine when they went through.
That's what I was saying. I, I think it's Councilmember Walker, cause I.
So late at night when you're out there.
You sit there, you sit there for that thing to go through the whole cycle and there's nobody else.
Yeah, no, cause someone told me it changed, in fact, just today, they told me, it's like, oh, thanks for fixing that light. And so I was like, okay. Let me see for you, it's not working. So we'll look into that.
Okay.
And Walker, he's getting in a truck with me. We're driving to the light and we're gonna sit there and watch it.
Perfect.
You need to let him know what time, what, what.
Now, what time, what time do we need to do that at? Is that like in one, two o'clock in the morning?
I don't think it ever works, to tell you the truth.
Buying me breakfast.
Koans every week and it works just fine every week up there, so.
No cars.
That's what I say.
Need to come, need to come in, need to be heading north. From, from Hampton, head north and see if it works that way.
All right, so northbound.
Northbound.
Okay.
Okay.
One more quick question.
There's just a.
Yeah, far away. Well, I think we got a couple, I think.
I have one down here, do you? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, I just wondered about what happened over Smith Park.
What happened to Smith Park?
Yeah, with the, with the.
Oh, the retaining walls?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we had uh, so last Saturday, we had a, a big service project. We had a, a state come in and I think there was what, seventy people there or so, somewhere in there and so. So we, we prepped the wall, we dug behind the wall, so we had city crews come dig behind the wall and then they, they took the wall down. And then they started stacking it back up, because the wall was kind of leaning out, right? We, we felt like the leaning tower of Pisa was not appropriate at that location. Um, and so we took that wall down and then we started restacking. Now, unfortunately, they didn't have enough time to get it all restacked. So there's still a little bit of work that needs to happen on that wall. They also went around, I think, picked up pine cones and, and did some other service activities.
Yeah, they, they helped cut the edges on the ball fields over there at Smith Park and a bunch of stuff like that, just some cleanup.
So I'm just curious how long before we can get that wall backed up?
Um, that's, that's a good question. No, that's a good question.
Greg, Greg, in our, in our staff meeting, he said he's got a, a crew that he thinks he can get on it before too long. So what, what before too long means, I'm not exactly sure, but hopefully it won't be too long.
Yeah, okay.
So, everything's relative. Uh, okay, yes, Councilmember Erickson.
Just a couple things that Keith on, last night, I think we need to do a lot better communication with our citizens. I know it's not our, totally our fault. Uh, with the state, I said in the meeting a week and a half ago and it wasn't even brought up, but the state, like thirty-three in Main Street, our new light system. Last night, they shut down that whole crossing and I don't know if our emergency responders were notified. I don't know if anybody was notified. I didn't see on Eastside on news, I didn't see.
Yeah, it was on the news. Yeah, they, they talked about that they were gonna be closing for two nights. And it, it was on the news and I would think our emergency responders should have been notified, but I.
And I don't know if they hit all news, Eastside on news, it wasn't on. I didn't see it at all, but I know that it hit our public was definitely locked out. I've heard it numerous times from a lot of people last night to try and get home and try and get back this way this morning. Um, just, just if we can communicate them, let's please communicate that out with every aspect we can so our citizens know. And our first responders know, cause I'd hate them respond out west and not to be able to get there like I tried to get home last night and after I've. Another fifteen minutes down south. I mean, it's fifteen minutes, but for first responders or for the public, it's kind of better communicated.
There's, there's actually a few things we need to talk with ITD about on some of those, so that's, that's one of the things.
I just wanted to bring that up because I definitely was.
No, I think it's a good, a good comment, cause I wasn't aware of it.
At the gym this morning, that was the talk.
You gotta talk about something at the gym.
Okay, any other questions for Keith? All right, I guess that's all.
All right, thanks.
There you go, thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, item number nine, of course, I don't really have a lot of other business. Other than just a reminder of uh graduation tomorrow night at the uh, at the ICE Center. Uh, we got this letter, uh, did, did you all just get this letter today? I think I just got it today, but I don't know. Oh, you did?
Walking down to my room, so.
Note box every day, but.
It was in the council notebooks.
Oh.
And Mayor, just so you're aware of, I did contact the high school yesterday, cause I, I'm sitting going, we always get this letter, we always get announcement. And I haven't seen it, well, two days ago, I guess Monday. And they said, still come.
They'll let us in?
Understood that it was sent here and no one got it.
Okay.
So I say, if you wanna be there, please show up and be there, so.
Okay, great. All right, well, we'll see you all then tomorrow night. Is everybody able to attend or you got them? Oh, you got temple, that's right, yeah. Okay, all right, well, we'll see you there tomorrow night then. That'll be fun. All right, item number ten, items for consideration. We've got the planning and zoning recommendation to approve the Teton River Town Homes. Plaid number twenty-five zero zero one seven two located at three fifty-one East Lorine Street. This application is to subdivide the parcel into forty-four lots. Mr. Parkinson, tell us about this.
Mayor, council, thank you. Uh, this is a property located just behind Standard Plumbing and Five Guys. You have the Teton lofts just to the west of it, you have Teton flats just to the south of it. Uh, originally this started out with uh Mr. Latham showing us a plan for the whole ten acres. And the first phase was those two buildings you see to the left. He completed those, decided to move a different direction. Sold this section of it to uh another company. They are developing it. And at this point, they're looking at plating these as individual townhomes. So they're in groups of six, seven each in those, and they wanted to get this platted so they can provide those for sale. They fit within the scope of the zoning, they fit uh the area. We have uh the capacity for sewer water. And we take a look at the roads accesses and they meet all those requirements, so. Uh, planning and zoning has recommended it to you for you to approve.
All right, is there any questions about this item from anyone?
Alan, I have one question. So this will have access north on the roads. Could you go back to the map?
Eventually it will. But it's not part of their plan, but it is designed eventually to cut straight to the north through that center.
So that's the only concern I would have is that everything going down to a stop sign on to Second East, which is higher, busiest one.
Currently, right now, they will have an access coming out on Carlo also.
But they will have that north one.
Yeah. I like, going clear through. Yeah, they'll have one that'll cut back to Carlo and they can come around that way also. So there's two access points to this.
That's why I want to know, just so they get up to that light and be able to get on the.
The plan eventually is for that one in the middle to go up too?
All the way through, yeah.
As long as they have two, instead of sending everybody down to the stop sign.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, uh, I would entertain a motion to move forward on this particular item. Is there such a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to move forward on the acceptance of this.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll go ahead and make that, make that change or do those subdivisions. Okay, thank you, thank you, Alan. All right, item number eleven, we have no second or third readings on the calendar. Item number twelve is the consent calendar, which is the minutes from the May seventh, twenty twenty-five meeting. And the approval of the payment of the City of Rexburg bills. Uh, I would entertain a motion to move forward with the consent calendar at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Is there any questions or discussion about the consent calendar? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will enter the minutes, pay the bills. Right, thank you. Right, item number thirteen, we uh have the need to move into an executive session as per Idaho State Statute seventy-four dash two oh six one F. To communicate with our legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies. Not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated. Uh, the mere presence of a legal counsel at an executive session does not satisfy this requirement, just, just as a note. Um, at this time, I would entertain a motion to move into executive session as per this Idaho statute.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we uh move into executive session per the Idaho State statutes.
All right, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Council President Walker. Any uh further discussion? Hearing none, we need a roll call vote to move into executive session. Deborah, would you do that, please?
Councilmember Reeser?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Erickson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Council President Walker?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Colin Erickson?
Yes.
All right, the, um, that motion passes. We will move into executive session, which means we will have to excuse all of you, those who are here. But you're welcome to come back. Uh, the only item on the agenda is the adjournment, which won't be real exciting. But uh, we appreciate you being here and participating with us tonight, so thank you very much. And we will, we will adjourn into executive session at this time.
Mayor, I just have one bit of information I wanted to relay.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Eric, Colin Erickson asked us about the light pole out on LLA.
Yeah.
What happened in that situation was because of the power lines, they took the head of that and mounted on the power pole. And they didn't put the pole up, so they do have the lights they need. So I just wanted to, you asked about that in the last meeting. Yeah, yeah, it's, those were too low to put the right pole in, so I just wanted to let you know on that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, yeah.